I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Okay, are you doing this or Sean? All right. We have our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board this morning? It appearing that there is not any commissioner reports.
I would have one thing. I would announce that Bob Wilcox, the executive director, has stepped down as the executive director and Chris Jacobson. Deputy has been appointed to that role. So she is our new executive director for the county association.
All right. She'll do a great job.
She will.
Then we will just move along with our regular business and our budget work session. And Madam Auditor, you are in charge of running the show here with us, right?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so...
And I just want you to make sure that you're using your microphone so anybody listening in can hear you.
All right, so I gave you guys the sheet that showed which departments were over 5% of last year's requested. So I thought we would start by just going through, down through that list.
And Sherri, where is that sheet?
Should be in the front of your book.
Okay, is it the first ones?
Is that the one with the three-year fund variance for budgets?
Summary of fund differences.
Yep. Gotcha.
Which one is that, Sherri?
Right here. Right behind Nicole's.
This one?
Right there, all right. You got her.
All right, so we start, the first one that I got circled is for the elections and obviously there's a reason there's a 70% difference on that one. Because I didn't have an election last year. So we didn't have the request. The request for this year then is 120,000. And you'll see in the book behind there is the spreadsheet of what I've got it broken out for. And again, when we're talking about this today, this is only the expenditures. It's nothing to do with wages or employees.
Okay.
I kind of thought we would break it up into two different groups so we can focus on the expenditures this time and employees next time.
Okay.
And then after that, I have, I mean, I don't know, do you guys want to go through the individual budgets as we go or how do you want to do it?
I think if that makes the most sense.
What would be, what would be the, what would be the quickest to get a picture overall and then we can go back into individuals if we want to?
The quickest would probably be to run down through this list.
Yes.
And then see where the differences are.
Sure.
I'd like that.
So...
Because I've got an explanation behind it for kind of what some of the differences are.
So our general fund, for example, from 21 was 16 million, 22 is 17 million, difference was 7.76%, right?
Right, that's the revenue.
That's on the right page. Am I on the right page now?
You are on the right page.
So Sherri, can you throw your summary up on the overhead? If you have an extra one? And then can we work through it that way?
Yep. All right, so again, the first one that I have was for the elections. And that is because there wasn't a election last year. The next one, I have them numbered on the side, so that says the number I'll be going down, number five.
Are you, on the elections, are you over this year because of that referendum that we're having in July?
I will be, yeah. We're going to do a supplement.
Okay.
Yeah, probably about 60,000 to 70,000.
Do we, do you think we should budget in for a referendum in for next year so that that doesn't happen again or what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I mean, you could, but if you're... That's eaten up a lot of budget that might not be there.
Okay.
That's where we've got the contingency for all the budget hearings, I think. That might be a better use just because we don't know if they're going to happen.
Okay.
Sherri, go back to the commissioners. It shows that we had about a 15.74 reduction. Is that due to the fact we don't take mileage anymore? We don't take meals anymore?
Uh, let me look and see.
I need you to use your microphone too. Thank you.
Okay, so, um... It looks like I decreased the commissioners' fees and books to 60,000 from the 96 last year. And I think, um... I think that I might be... I went through and I actually added up what was paid over the last three years and that's where I came up with that number.
Okay.
Because it...
But the commissioners, you know, voted, we didn't, what, we, we don't pay for, we don't get mileage and I don't know what else did we take? We took some pretty drastic steps. That's been a couple of years ago.
Yep, for the last couple of years, you haven't had mileage or, um...
Meals?
Meals.
Yeah. Okay.
How much does the referendum election cost?
I, I think the one we had in 18, 17 was 60 to 70,000 dollars.
Do you know how much the one this time around is going to cost?
Not until we're done, because I've got, I've got to put other election workers in place. I mean, I wouldn't imagine it'd be much different. Because we've got to order the same amount of ballots because it's a full county.
Right, there's a certain baseline cost that we're going to incur, isn't there?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, because we've got the, we've got to get the, um... What's it called? The software and everything for the 850s and, you know, we're not running the, some of the machines that we would normally have to run in a federal election, so we're trying to put less workers in some of the precincts instead of having five, we're putting three just because of the turnout from the last referendum. I hope it doesn't bite us, but I'd hate to have five people sitting in a polling place that only had a 2% turnout.
Right.
Type of thing, so we're trying to be as cautious as we can about it. All right, so the number five, we've got, that's the auditor. I did look back, I've... Probably I'm like a lot of people and just threw numbers in here, just to throw the numbers in there. Our furniture and minor equipment, I've got $3,400 down for that. I would, I would probably take that off because I can't think of anything now or in the next budget year that we're going to need that's going to be, you know, of that kind of expense. So that I would lower by $3,400. Otherwise, the rest of it is, supplies and materials have gone up a little bit just because the cost of everything has gone up. So that would take mine down to...
On the, if I can back up a second?
Mm-hmm.
On the judicial, that 3.47% increase, where are we putting the money for the court? Where are we going to put that money for the courtrooms? Where is that going to be budgeted at?
I would imagine it would have to be under buildings, general government buildings.
Okay, that'll come under that.
I would think so.
Okay. That was my only question on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Treasurer. State's Attorney.
Okay, so the state's attorney would be next. I did have a discussion with Tom. Bill is here somewhere.
Bill's, he's standing out?
Okay.
In the hallway?
Um, when I talked to Tom about it, the increase on state's attorney was 19.44. Most of that comes from the professional fees. They've got some heavy hitters coming up next year for trials.
Sure.
So they increased that, so I don't think 20% is out of line for their expenditure increase.
And is that, is that just for the cost of prosecution of those cases or?
Yep, yep, the expert witnesses and things that he's going to have to have for that.
Okay.
General government building, John is in training today out of state, so he can't go over it. I suppose we can probably schedule a deal. He does have a worksheet behind his though to explain where his numbers come from. And if there's something that you want us to look more into.
Well, if that's where the courtrooms are going to be at, that's obviously not in here.
Right, right, but I mean, at the point of where it's at right now, we're going to, do we want John, we're going to have to have John talk about this anyway.
Is, is his increase due to modification within the buildings, Sherri, ourselves? I mean, like, is this an upgrade? Has he got anything for renovation of the old courtroom or old courthouse? Is there anything in there for that?
There is... So if you look at his second page, he's got a spreadsheet that shows everything that he's putting it on.
What page is that?
Right. So after his budget worksheet.
Which is under what tab?
Um, the general.
General, okay.
Which one's it under?
Right there.
Yeah, so if you pull up this, all the information that I have for each department is behind there.
Okay.
So there's...
That is.
Yep, right here. So yeah, if you just follow along with the budget sheets as we go.
Yeah.
The information for their expenditure, did you find it all?
Well, I see, you know, a big thing is demolish the old jail. And general maintenance on some stuff and demolish abated property on the airports, so.
Well, and, so the demolish the abated property, I know that with talking with Bill, we're not able to do that because we don't even have title to it.
Okay.
So, and the demolish of the old jail, when I've talked to John about it, he said he's got actually a lower, I think it was 80,000 dollars that he's got to demolish the old jail.
Yeah, and there's been a, this issue of demolishing the abated property at the airport.
Mm-hmm.
There's been a citizen who's offered to do that for us if they can use the land. But we've got a, some kind of ongoing court case or some kind of ongoing action in the planning and zoning department going to that piece of property too. So if we dig into each of these line items, like I think we need to, we could probably start working on it.
Mm-hmm.
For example, carpet and painting project in sheriff's office.
I have the same one checked.
They're going to get a new office.
Yep, I have the same one checked.
Why would we do any painting and carpet? Now granted, I'm sure John probably put this together before, um...
Right.
Took action, but, you know, we got to start digging into these, I think.
Nope, I agree. So the ones that, I mean, and with John not being here, the ones that I put check marks by was the demolish the old jail and that's because he said that he can get it done cheaper. Like our Joel said, carpet and painting, the sheriff's office, demolish the abated property at the airport. The memorial site, I mean, are we thinking that if we're going to do a memorial site at the justice system or center, are we going to do one here? I mean, I know that we want to, but are we going to have one when we have one in the backyard type thing? I mean, I know it's a nice idea, but it's 25,000 dollars. The evidence storage room for the sheriff, that's 60,000 dollars. I think that's another thing, obviously, if they're, they're going to have that. And fence around the offsite storage building. The only other thing is the 60,000 dollars for a pickup. So, and, I mean, it might be better served for John to be here, however, I think those ones are kind of obvious.
You know, just for quick math, if you took, if you took the demolishing the jail at 80,000, you eliminated the abated property at the airport, you eliminated the carpet and painting, you took away the veterans memorial and you took away the sheriff's office, you're almost at 225,000 dollars worth of reductions, which, yeah, pretty good.
But there is one thing that you might want to keep in mind, the carpet and painting for the sheriff's office, there is going to probably have to be some remodeling done down there depending on what we use in the space. So taking that 45,000 dollars out, when we have to remodel it then later, we might want to leave the 40,000 or 45,000 in there just as a cushion.
Just for repair purposes. You may not spend it all, but you may have the, in your budget to do it.
Well, they, depending on how they have to remodel it, because usually the remodels are a lot more expensive.
But the whole point is there's some, there is some...
There is some cushion in there.
Significant savings that we can do there.
Yeah, and we probably need to talk with John too, and he may not even have any answers for this about timing and sequencing of a new judicial center.
Well, yeah, see, and that's the thing, if we're looking at two years.
Right.
But I still think that some of these things, two years out, we're still not going to need them.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
All right, so... See that the Director of Equalization had a drop. There, you'll see that a lot of, some departments have had significant drops. And when Jake comes up to talk about his budget, then you'll understand why, but there's been some shift of expenditures from these departments to IT and that's why Director of Equalization has a 15% drop. It's for licensing and software type stuff.
So is she going to, is that going to follow through with all the departments here where they're shifting their like, computer, IT type licenses to the IT budget now?
Yep, yep.
As opposed to budgeting through their own office?
Yeah, because then Jake can, um, control the pricing better. If he's got an idea of what the overall licenses are, but I, that's more Jake's thing, so I'll let him talk on that because I know what the idea behind it is. There's also been a switch, and Julia will talk about this, where employment recruitment has moved to HR more, you know, because it's their thing, the individual departments don't know the specific costs, so we thought it would be more effective for those departments that handle them to take the expenses on. That's why you'll see Julia's, and she'll be up here in a minute to talk about the increase on hers.
Well, I think that's good business planning. I mean, really, that's the way it was supposed to be.
Well, yeah, because with Jake taking on the license and, I mean, there's some people that are paying for license that there's too many licenses or they're not getting the best, you know, that's just his specialty and he does it well. Okay, so... And if I'm moving too fast, let me know. The Register of Deeds, there, supplies have increased and basically that was, they've got new employees, so obviously they're going to have to buy some stuff to get them up to speed. There's also some little extras that they want to buy in the office, I think, that probably doesn't count for much.
Sherri, when we buy office supplies here at the county and the treasurer needs something and the Register of Deeds office needs something, they just go out on their own and buy it or is there like some kind of coordinated bulk purchasing plan that we use or how does that work?
Um, they do go out on their own and buy it from whatever source they prefer. There's no centralized, we've talked about doing a centralized buying, putting like a vending machine for office supplies in the basement or something so you can track who's using them. That hasn't come to light yet. Maybe give us a year and...
Yeah, I, I mean, if, on the surface, it would seem like maybe doing bulk purchasing would work, you know, would result in some savings. I don't know if that's true though or not.
I, I think it is.
Okay.
I think it, I honestly think it is because...
You know, every month, somebody places an order with... Who, who do we even use right now? Is it, is it all over the board?
I use Amazon.
Okay.
Um... A lot of people use Quill. Uh, McLeod's. McLeod's is a lot of our printing supplies. We've tried to lean towards them. I've had long conversations with him. He's tried to sell me pens and I was just like, it's not going to happen because obviously Amazon is cheaper and I get them in two days, so.
Well, I get these guys who call my office every quarter from like Sioux Falls business or whatever their name is. They're like, what do you need this quarter? What do you need? Well, I didn't know if we do it the same way here or not.
We don't have a local supplier. No, everybody does their own thing.
Okay, got it.
And I do, I think that would save money.
I don't know.
I think it would save a lot of money just because like Quill is expensive. We've got it to wear our paper. We have our paper bought and on pallets instead of everybody ordering a box of papers, so.
Right.
We're hitting there.
Same way with like office or, with like printers and copiers and things like that.
Yeah.
Do we use one provider for that?
Um...
Do each of the departments just go out and buy what they want?
Nope, we actually took all the, um, ink and toner and whatever else that goes through Jake because Jake's got a fine... He can talk on that, I don't know. Alls I know is he's got all of it. He monitors where all the toners are throughout the building except for the, or the ones that we have leased. Then like A and B brings our toner out for nothing.
Okay.
But the individual machines Jake monitors and fills, so.
Sure.
Which was a huge cost saving over the last year.
Sure.
All right. So insurance. Um, we have had over the last couple of years, increased claims on our insurance. The reason is, is because the more we write in payments, the higher our liability insurance becomes. So that's why I have increased it and I still think it's probably a little low for the insurance to the 90, what did I say? 95 over the 83 that we've normally done.
Is this EMC we're talking about now?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. I think we ought to look at having, uh, David Feifley's group come in, make a presentation to us from the South Dakota... What is their name?
For the pool.
For the pool.
The pool, yeah.
Yeah.
We've done...
I talked to him at the County Commissioner Association. He said we're one of the few counties who doesn't use them. I don't know the thought process behind that. I'm not saying it's good and not saying it's bad. I know that we've used this EMC company for quite a while. Feifley was actually explaining to me that we can use them and still go through the local insurance carrier if that's what, if that's the hangup for some of the commissioners, just wanting to keep doing business with the same guy. I don't know if that's what the issue is or not. And recently, I had a group out of Sioux Falls call me. They want to make a presentation as well. Specifically with regard to cybersecurity issues. They, they think that we could reduce some of our costs on that front.
Okay.
Still get the same kind of coverage, but I don't know that for a fact of it.
Right.
Just their pitch to me.
Well, yeah.
We have had, we have had, I don't know how many times we have had both insurance from Jensen and the other one that have both made presentations. And the reason that we have stayed consistently with them is there is no significant difference. And in some cases, but maybe it's time. I'm certainly not opposed to having somebody come in and make, make another bid on that, but we are one of, I think we're made, one of 10 or 12 counties in the state that have a private insurance as opposed to the other coverage provided by, whatever that's called.
And I have talked to them.
The pool.
I talked to them at the same meeting or whatever. Our insurance renews in October, so if we want to, then we can go ahead and move forward and, you know, the next meeting or whatever, approve to get RFPs to take out for insurance. And we'll do those, you know, Jensen again and whoever else puts in.
Right, and, and there's other intangibles as well that we need to consider.
They cover everything.
Because with Jensen right now, one of the things we don't get is, and I'm not pitching for the South Dakota pool, I'm just passing the message on. The pool offers the benefits that we don't get from Jensen right now with regard to legal services as well.
Right.
You know, they give a whole host of these trainings, consultations and, and other services. So the price may be the same, but the services may, you know, there may be additional services that...
Yep, nope, I agree.
We ought to just put it out there.
Yep, I agree.
And there's something, and I don't remember this, but I think that some of the reasoning is how the claims are processed too and how the the time period runs with claims. And I, I can't recall what it is, but there's a difference in going from one to the other with that regard. And Kevin Jensen explained it to me a long, long time ago, which is why I can't spit it back out.
So you mean for the liability insurance, how it's, how they do it then?
Right, um...
Well, because our liability insurance is through EMC and that's who the pool has, so I don't, I don't know if there would be a difference.
Well, I don't know. That's what I would want you to...
We'll find out.
Find out.
Yep.
Commissioner, Joel, I just got a text message, says can you have Joel speak into his mic? Can hardly hear him, so.
There you go. I'll pull it up here.
That's, see, that's the unfortunate thing when we go back and watch the videos.
It is.
There, we've spent a lot of money on the equipment to make it public and when you're not talking in the mic, I know you told me, but when you're not talking in the mic, the people watching the videos cannot hear you and it's just mumbles and it's...
It's nothing. You can't hear anything if you're not right up to your mic.
So with the money that we spent making all this, we should make it work.
Maybe we need a line item for more sensitive microphones too, I don't know.
Just stop moving it.
Madam Chair?
You're right.
Yes, Commissioner Poppins.
Commissioner Poppins.
Forgive me, is Jake there?
Jake is here.
Jake, would you mind commenting on the microphones that could be placed in the ceiling that would pick up maybe noises or voices and stuff? And you had looked into it, we looked into it and what the cost for that would be?
Yes, so we did look into getting microphones into the ceiling in this room here. Doing that was a cost of 15,000 dollars to do and it would put microphones pretty much everywhere in the room. It would pick up everybody speaking.
And that they're more sensitive?
Yeah, like you wouldn't have microphones at your console. You would, it would just be always on microphones.
Would it pick up too much?
Hmm.
There's always that chance.
Potentially it could. You could pick up whispers and talking and so it would be, anything in this room would be monitored 24/7 pretty much type of a scenario. But yes, that is a big topic of conversation. We get calls in the IT department that the microphones aren't working, but...
You know, Jake, I'm just going to hold this closer, okay?
That's kind of what we were like, uh...
Yeah, with everything that we've got going on to spend additional money upgrading microphones and everything, it's, might be too early considering we don't know where we're going.
Yeah, and there could be a potential of a new commission chambers from all we know, so at that point, we would definitely look into some, a better option.
Sure.
Good.
Jake, of the 15,000, how much of it is hardware? How much is it wiring, software?
Uh, 12,000, 12,000 was hardware and, and extra costs and then the other was labor. And installation and configuration.
The, the planning and zoning has the same issues. It seems silly to spend 15,000, but I think either A, the equipment's going to be outdated by the time we have an alternative location or, or B, we can move some of the stuff. You know, I, I've, we've heard it and heard it and heard it. It's just time for us, I think, to take a... Um, you know, I, I've, we've heard it and heard it and heard it. It's just time for us, I think, to take official um, remedy to fix that issue. And this, this would do it and it's uh, it's for the benefit of the public, so I'd actually be in favor of it, you know, going through with that expenditure, so.
Yes, yeah, and by the time we do come up with some sort of new scenario, the equipment back there will be outdated and by that time, we'd buy all new anyways, so. That'd be perfect scenario for us.
Alright, thank you. Where are we at, Sherri?
Um, GIS. So you see that there's a seventeen percent decrease in GIS. Again, that's with Jake taking over um, some of their licensing. And they've also got a breakdown of what their expenditures are on, are for on the back. They've got, it looks like travel and expenses for thirty-four hundred, training and certification for a thousand. Um, that seems to be, besides the aerial photography, that seems to be their biggest, biggest expenses.
And so all those shifts are why we see the jump on the IT.
I think so.
Side.
Yeah, yep. And again, I didn't even ask anybody to, to come down that had negative because they're asking less than what they did last year.
Did Jake wanna say anything about his budget?
Jake does wanna say something about his budget.
Sorry, doing a couple of things on this. Yeah, we can go over mine quick. Um, so the main, uh, large part of the increase in my budget for this year is due to the fact of uh, at a department head meeting and after doing some research, I found out that the departments were still paying for software out of their budgets and I hadn't, was not aware of that. So, this was a project we did like five, six years ago where we tried to transfer all those funds into mine. As the IT department is in charge of managing all of the licenses and software for the county. So, we thought that would be a great idea to move all those expenses over to me. Um, one thing that I've learned with, working with licensing is we can sign up for multi-year deals where if we pay for five years and we know we're gonna use the software for five years, we get a twenty percent discount. So, things like that is gonna come down the line. Uh, I did increase the budget on that. Uh, but what I did also as well is all of them that came over to me, we're gonna sign a five-year agreement with one and we're gonna do a one-year at the next. So that every five years, we don't have this huge expenditure on my budget. It'll, that way it'll kind of level out of how much I would need every year instead of just going, oh, every five years, I need a two-hundred thousand dollar increase. And then it goes back down the next year. So, it'll, it'll even out, but it's gonna be a multi-year project of kind of making it level. Um, another cost increase that I had was the um, highway department. We're looking for a new software for them. The software that they have only um, deals with minor, minor accounting. Uh, we're gonna look into a software that will manage all of their inventory, their work orders, all of their accounting and make their jobs a little bit more efficient and have the documentation of when their equipment was used, how much, how many filters they have on file and things like that. Um, another cost increase that was big for my department was the, on the furniture and minor equipment, uh, we have a problem that I'm experiencing on a day-to-day basis here is where because of our influx of new employees um, and our influx in cases out there, we have a huge demand of video storage and our storage is going through the roof. Uh, over the past three years, I did the percentage of how, what our storage has increased and it has increased four hundred percent from where we were three years ago. Uh, so I had discussions with the sheriff to see if I could be potentially working up a new solution of trying to store this data and everything. And he was very considerate and gave me the ability to go do that. Um, so I looked up a new solution and that was to get a whole brand-new video system for the patrol cars and installing body worn cameras for the sheriff's office. Um, what it would do then is the, the storage would be partially here, but it would be partially in the cloud. And we would pay a yearly subscription with them for the cloud. That there would uh, allow us to alleviate some of the constraint we have on our storage needs here. But it does come at a cost, but it is a significantly lower cost yearly to do it that way than me coming to the board every budget cycle and saying I need eighty thousand dollars to buy a new storage system, just to keep up with the demand that we have. Um, we know that body worn cameras is something of the future that we want, that we, that was a need. It would help our cases exponentially. And we just know if we do that, that storage is gonna be astounding in how much we're gonna have, so we just wanna get prepared for that. Um, since I created this budget in March, though, we do have a problem is that it's a kind of a trickle-down effect. The more storage we have for the sheriff's office, now I have a potential problem with the state's attorney's office because now they have to house that video for their cases and they have to keep it for an even longer period of time for um, lit- litigation hold or some kind of holding. So, that is another huge problem we're having there. Um, another inc- reason for the increase too is that um, as our, we keep growing in positions, there's more equipment that's being needed. Um, that has been a huge change for the IT department. It seems like we're always constantly buying new equipment and getting new equipment for new employees on a daily basis. Any questions so far about that? I did also have one thing that came up that I really, really hope that you'd be willing to um, entertain is a couple of weeks ago, we were offered an interesting position of upgrading our property tax software. We would be the first in the state to do this. This is part of that committee I am in right now and Sherri is in that, that we are helping the developers design the new software for the property taxes that we will eventually have to go to at some point. But we're helping them with designing it and implementing it. And they wanted Lincoln County to be the first recipient for this software uh, in twenty-twenty-two.
Jake, is that software program part of the uh, I think we got a briefing on this at the county commissioner convention? Is it part of the one that's uh, I don't know, endorsed by the state?
This one is, yep, the state, this is uh, all-state backed. They um, love the software. Uh, they haven't seen the new version of it. They probably will see it and then audit it and make sure it complies with everything before we actually get our hands on it. But this is something that they've um, that even Minnehaha County moved to. It's a previous version. We're on that one. Uh, but this software will increase exponentially our work efficiency by a hundred percent.
What uh, what's the cost of the?
So, it would be a five, or it'd be a five-year agreement and it would be forty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, and that includes updates, maintenance, support, all of that. It's kind of the all-around thing. Though, what we would save on the, what we're getting a discount on for being the first people to doing it would be about forty thousand dollars. On the grand total of the five years.
Jake, would we be piloting this program then?
We would be piloting.
Be the first.
Yes. Um, I have talked to all of the staff or all of the department heads here and discussed it, like, do we want to be this person? Do we wanna do this? And everybody's excited for it so much that they want to use the, want to be the first to do it.
Yeah, it, it, uh, at the commissioner convention, they explained how uh, and this goes towards your larger presentation today. How all the different counties across South Dakota use all the different programs. And there's no consistency, there's no uniformity. And just the question that kept coming up is, why don't we buy in bulk? Why don't we buy in bulk? What's going on here? And I think that's why the state is trying to push this issue, so they can have leverage with the developers and owners of the software, so we can start seeing some of those cost savings in the future. May not see it on the front end, but.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean, this new software will be amazing and we would be able to explain to the developers what is required for South Dakota and then they could implement those changes for us.
And you do have that in your current budget request?
That is not in this budget request currently. It would be an additional forty-five thousand dollars. Um, that would increase the total to eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand five hundred.
Right, I mean, I thi- I think you should put it in there.
I do too.
Personally.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Jake, quick question. Uh, reassure, they'll uh, reassure us that they'll be there hand-in-hand as we do the learning curve on this thing as we'll be the first one to implement this?
Yeah, they, they actually informed me that we would be VIP support, so when we call, they pick up. It's not a waiting period. It would just be right there instantly. Um, and we would work with them. They would actually work with us as we go through every bit of a cycle. Every year, we have a different cycle of equalization office does this, auditor does this, treasurer does this. They will actually sit with us every time that happens to make sure everything works completely.
Where's their main headquarters?
Um, the property tax division is in Ames, Iowa.
What else you got?
Uh, that's pretty much it unless you have more questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Jake? If not, we'll keep moving along.
Oh, I should say though, uh, with the, I forgot to mention this, um, with the patrol vehicles on the cameras and the internet devices, we are looking into getting grants for those. So, we are applying for grants, so that cost might actually go down. We're just not sure of until we get approved for the grant. But you don't get approved until next year. So, that's the hard part there. We have some of them that are one-to-one cost and we have one that was like seventy-five, twenty-five. They pay seventy-five, we get twenty-five, so there should be a huge cost savings there once we get a grant approved for in Lincoln County.
Those, when you adopt that, you're using state-of-the-art then. You're getting the latest. You know, some of these things have gotten some age on them. And now you'd have a completely new upgrade. So, we'd stay current there as well.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Jake.
Thanks, Jake. Move on to HR's budget?
Yep, and Julia is here to go over her budget with you.
Alright. Good morning, Julia.
Good morning. Um, this is rather straightforward about the increase. Um, Jake, how do I make it, can I make it a little bit more blown up? Thank you. Okay, so the biggest increases, um, as it pertains to the expenditures are right here. And this is simply like Sherri indicated before, it's because um, what I'm proposing to department heads is that A, the HR department takes over part of the recruitment process. Um, and the advertising and by doing this, it's actually gonna be a cost savings, 'cause then I can get a membership through Kelloland. Um, so it would be a cost savings um, of about twelve hundred dollars. And so, how it would work is that um, out of the HR budget um, it, it would come out for newspaper ads, um, Kelloland advertisement, and then all the fingerprinting costs for all new employees. Now, anything over and above that, like for deputy sheriff's position, we spent probably a good five thousand dollars on additional recruitment ads. And that would be then that department's responsibility. Unless, of course, you'd like me to take that on and I'm happy to, but that would just be an increase from what I have already enclosed. So, that's the biggest increase right there. Um, everything is fairly consistent. You'll see that there is a slight increase of five hundred dollars under um, job fair accessories. Um, and recruitment materials, this simply comes from um, hopefully this year, now that COVID is um, slowing down, I'd like to think it is, um, that we can get out to some different schools and promote Lincoln counties and the opportunities that we currently have or will have in the future to kind of help build that recruitment process. Um, and then the next slight increase you'll see down here is a thousand dollars. Um, and the increase down here under um, other is simply be cut for um, EAP programming, which is employee assistance programming. Um, and that is due just simply because it's an increase to the cost per service. And actually utilization for the EAP service, um, the counseling sessions last year increased, which is good. It's a good benefit. And um, employees are utilizing it, which is a good thing. Um, and then also under collective bargaining agreement that we have with the sheriff's office, um, they, they received um, additional services as well, so I just wanna make sure that folks are able to utilize the benefit and the funds are there. So, slight increase there. Oh, and then I budgeted for a filing cabinet. Questions? Well, I needed a filing cabinet.
I'd like to know where you can get one for four hundred fifty bucks. I mean, you better tell me, 'cause I'd like to buy one there too.
I'll find one. That's all.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, so, um, the sheriff actually ended up, he was gonna be here today, but he ended up having another obligation. Um, I did talk to him and we know that most of his increase is probably from the prisoner care. Um, due to the current numbers as of yesterday, he says this number's probably low. It probably actually needs to go to two-point-five million for prisoner care and housing. Um, he based it on fifty-nine inmates. I think he said there was sixty-four yesterday. So, I don't think it's gonna go down anytime soon. Um, his other uh, request was for the six vehicles. And he's attached the information in regards to the vehicles as far as mileage um, and that they need to be turned over. I've also included in your information the number of calls that they've had in twenty-twenty-one to kind of see that, I guess, more or less just for informational pur- purposes. But for increased prisoners that we've had, I don't think the seven-point-nine-four percent is out of line. And if we take the two-point-five, I mean, it's, we have to do it, so.
I got a question, Sherri.
I hope I can answer it.
For how many, yeah, and I'm just flagging the issue really, 'cause I know the sheriff isn't here, but uh, he's asking for six new vehicles?
Yes.
Is the, is there a rationale or anybody who's previously been on the commission can tell me why we do like this uh, purchasing all the vehicles all at once as opposed to buying a new one every year and putting it into the rotation? Commissioner Schmidt, maybe you've got some history with that?
We have uh, we have periodically bought, uh, not in this volume, but um, we bought one or two or three cars. I don't know, Commissioner, but I would imagine that the amount of uh, mileage that we're experiencing now is due to growth and the number of cars that we have on the uh, on active patrol all the time. And some of these get uh, I mean, they rack miles up. I, I was amazed when sheriff told me he put a new car online and the car ran solid for one week. I mean, it just, it got shut off when it was delivered. But it was turned off, another deputy stepped in, it drove for it, come back, stepped in. And literally thousands of miles were racked up in one week, so uh, uh, I know this is a huge expenditure, but um, you make a good point. But how do we feather that in um, and still maintain uh, safe vehicles out there? Because I think we have one vehicle out there that has over two-hundred thousand miles on it. And I don't know that uh, that that's the safest thing for, to put our deputies in. But I can't answer your question specifically, Commissioner, as to, but I know that this is the largest number that we have probably bought at any one time. So, is this new? I mean, replacement or additional?
Replacement.
Replacement.
And I think that's, if you, I mean, if you look at the years of these cars, um, I think they do rotate them out and buy them a few at a time.
Okay.
Um, I don't think, I think two or three maybe is what it's been, but with the, like Jim was saying, with the increased mileage to driving all over the county, controlling the whole area, they're putting more miles on them, so.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the need. I'm just wondering if there's a way to feather those purchases in.
I think they do. I think they budget for, but then you have to take into consideration that we're increasing our number of deputies.
Right.
Um, they need cars.
Yep.
So, then maybe that's why it's been more of a increase this year, but I can put that note down for the sheriff and then we can get back to you, or he can, or you can touch base with him or.
Sure.
However, we wanna do it. I think the prisoner care is the overall.
Aren't we all trying to get, uh, isn't the sheriff trying to get one particular model? We're going away from sedans, we're going more towards Ford Edge or whatever. So, they have some consistency in, in the models as well, so we don't have, you know, like, I mean, whatever the, whatever the bid is or whatever we can buy them for, but I'm thinking we're getting SUVs. But I'm thinking we're getting SUVs as opposed to four-door sedans and.
That's what it looks like.
Yep.
All right. The next one is going to be the coroner. And I'm sorry, Toby, we got you down here a little. The coroner's contract, it's, I mean, he, he wasn't able to be here today. If you need to talk to him, he can come in a later date. But I think he is pretty conservative on his budget. It just is, it's just is what it is kind of type of thing for six point six one.
Right.
I, I went in and met with the coroner about four months ago. And I know Commissioner Gibbon did as well. He gave us a, kind of outlined how he could reduce his budget, actually. There is one particular medical establishment in our county that calls in every decedent and it results in increased cost to the county. But it's completely unnecessary, medically unnecessary, according to the coroner. But we get tagged with that bill. And I don't know, Commissioner Gibbon, you want to talk more about that at all? I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I know you and I have talked about this.
I know, and, and when I talked to the supervisor, he said, well, if that is the case, just don't pay the bill. And it's like, well, I, I don't want the county to get in trouble for not paying their bills either, but there has to be a little more clarification.
Yeah, I think, I think we could put you in touch with who this particular medical provider is. Because we, we've heard from the top, the very top of this medical establishment, and they said, don't pay the bill.
So you can deny the claim when it comes through the?
We'll talk more about it offline.
Okay, perfect.
But it may help us. It's not the silver bullet, but it'll help.
Right, well, every dollar helps. Juvenile detention, there's an increase there. We got the contract at the end of the year. So I did a six percent increase because we always get the contract after budget's set. So we might as well just build it in there right now. Last year, I think it was three percent with expectations it's going to be the same. I just increased it another three percent.
Okay. You know, since Toby's down here, why don't we switch so he can get back to planning and zoning?
Hey. Toby.
Good morning, Toby.
Hi, good morning. I gave you a little spreadsheet here I can walk through really quick. So the, this is again, other expenses outside of personal expenses, which we'll talk about a later date. But the main increase and, and the proposed budget for planning and zoning next year would be the conference of plan update. And so I anticipate that to be kind of a two-year process so that we can spread the cost out a little bit. But that, estimating that to be right around seventy-five thousand. So you'll see an increased difference of sixty-three thousand one hundred in fees and contracts. So that, that typical budget line item that covers are outside engineering reviews. The subdivision ordinance of the county requires that, that staff submit all subdivision plans to the county engineer for review and essentially approval. So to date, I, we've, the department has expended approximately thirty percent of our current budget. So I am a little concerned going in next year with this. As you know, I've had a lot of applications come before you this year so far. But again, the main increase in, in, in the budget proposal will be for the conference of plan update. Again, that'd be a two-year proposal on that. Publishing, right now, the department's at approximately fifty percent of our publishing budgeted cost for this year. Again, I'm a little concerned with that too. The increase of the Argus, or the addition of the Argus later in addition to our four legal newspapers has, has increased the overall cost of that. And then as the rest of the departments, under Sherry's guidance, we've broken out travel and conference and training and certification. So it shows a decrease there, but it's actually just moving it down to the training and certification part of it. Other than that, that's really the, the change in the overall other expenses for the planning budget.
Anybody have any questions?
That contract again, for the conference of plan update, that would come before you and we, you know, solicit whoever that would be to do that. So you'll have some input into that as well. But it's a best guess based on we've updated or just completed the master drainage plan. Terry and I worked on the update to the master transportation plan, so I was utilizing that as kind of a guide for anticipating what that cost would be. Probably a little bit low, but we'll have to kind of work through that with, with whoever's going to RFP or bid on the consultant part of it. But again.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Sorry. With the adoption of medical marijuana and having to, having to engage in, you know, inspections and certifications of things like fire suppression systems and chemical extraction booths and, and as part of their manufacturing process. Are you going to be able to, is your department going to be able to handle that in-house with your current inspectors? Or will one of two things, do they need to get more training on those systems? Or do we need to hire additional personnel to handle that?
Sure. So, so currently, we, we send all commercial industrial projects out to an outside vendor for review and approval of those. The same vendor that Sioux Falls, T and Harrisburg utilizes through that process. So no, I don't think we'll have to, to increase any training or any staffing of that in our department.
What are the charges for that, just out of, if you know, just out of curiosity?
It's a, it's a percentage of what we charge for the building permit. So it's typically three percent of what we charge for the building permit.
Is that suitable enough to be able to pay for, I mean, do you think that's a fair price?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
But in saying that, I, I jumped through, but one other thing we're also experiencing now is to date, we're at, you know, this is not even, you know, half, almost next, next week will be halfway through the year. But we're already at the, at the halfway point, the total building permits that we typically have in a year. So there's some, you know, and you know this, there's some tremendous amount of development growth going on. But again, at the halfway point, we're at what we were last year for total building permits. So there's some significant increase in development. So, you know, budgeting fuel and stuff like that, I, I bumped it up a little bit. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, we, we look back at past trends. We don't just make up numbers. But what we're experiencing this year is something that we haven't seen any time in the past as far as growth and development.
Thanks, Toby.
So Toby, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Most, most of your increase is in fees and contracts then, or am I looking at that correctly?
Correct. So, so the increase in fees and contracts, that's for outside engineering services. So we're anticipating we'd, we'd start the conference of plan update. So that's a hundred percent what that increase is, is for the conference of plan update.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well, I know, I was looking for Terry. He was here and.
Oh, he got a phone call.
Okay.
We'll just keep going till he comes back?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So where are we at? Flood plane. There was no significant, significant increase there. Other economic, okay, so. I left the numbers at what they were for the other economic. I wasn't sure what we were going to do with it or how we were going to proceed with it. You know, we did shift, well, I shouldn't say shift. We are now doing the.
I'm sorry, Madam Monitor, which one are you on now?
Other economic assistance.
Okay, thank you.
So we did do the shift, not shift, I keep saying that, but we're doing the money out of the divorce fees to, we're splitting them now quarterly. So I kind of thought that, and I haven't really gotten any other request for funding. The helpline did send me one for fourteen thousand, which is two thousand over what they submitted last year. And I think that's really the only actual request. Oh, Inter, Inter Lakes also sent it for sixty-four forty. Last year, we had. We ended up giving them basically the difference of when we cut it. So they kind of ended up short this last year. So I don't know how we want to divvy it out between the four that we use and other economic assistance. We've got Children's Inn, Helpline Center, the Compass Center and Inter Lakes.
Forward Sioux Falls will be coming down, making a presentation to us probably. And I think their ask is going to be twenty-five thousand dollars.
And that comes out of your budget?
Yep.
Yep.
But they'll be coming down for, and that's under, you know, economic assistance and stuff, but.
Okay.
How much do they want? I didn't hear.
Twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
And I think, what did they have?
And how much did they get last year?
This year, they got nine thousand. In 2020, we did fourteen, I believe, fourteen or fifteen thousand.
Okay.
But we dropped it.
We cut that in half. I think at one time we gave, I don't know, a significant more than that. But we've been cutting that back year after year. So they're coming in with a twenty-five thousand dollar ask.
The twenty-five is for one year?
Oh, no, that would be twenty-five thousand will be over for seven years or.
That's what, yeah. So there, it's not twenty-five thousand a year, it's twenty-five divided by seven.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're not giving them a hundred thousand dollars in other words.
So I think that's what we need to do is decide, and I don't know how we want to do this on the four that we normally do under other economic assistance. Keep going with what we're going, divide it, the thirty-four thousand over the four of them or.
Why is, why is the Forward Sioux Falls out of the commission budget not part of this?
That was my question.
I mean, it would make sense to me to transfer.
To put it all under economic.
That's what, that's exactly what I wanted to do. So I wanted to, because you guys, and that was another thing under your guys' commission budget. You have, and these, a lot of these I understand, but Sioux Falls Development Do, Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, South Dakota Code if I had a lot of packets, I get that. The audit comes out of yours, but then, yeah, Forward Sioux Falls is the only like donation type thing that comes out of yours. So that, if we move it to here.
Right.
And then increase this thirty-four thousand to the, what is this, the twenty-five thousand? You said over four, five years, Jim?
I think it's over a seven-year period.
Seven? So we increase this budget by four thousand. Then we would be able to have the Forward Sioux Falls out of here. We just still need to have, decide how we're going to do these other four that we take, that we pay out of here.
Well, I would certainly favor putting them all under one for economic development purposes. I see that we give the Compass Center probably the largest share, okay, Sherry, twenty-four?
The Helpline Center and the Compass Center gets the largest share of this, yep.
The Helpline Center is, I think, pretty critical because that's, that's statewide and that is a very, you know, that's a very needed assistance. Today, it's pretty convenient. The Compass Center, they've been in touch. She was down. The need is certainly there, but that could be something that may, maybe would have some adjustment back to add to some of these others. ICAP, you know, doesn't serve us. Rock does, but.
So on that note.
Are we, are we done?
I talked to those folks from Rock.
Yeah.
And they said what they, where did I put that? They were talking to me about doing the Canton Nutrition. And I said, well, we already give to Canton Nutrition. Oh, well, then that takes care of us. So I don't know if they were going to use it as a filtering mechanism, but I don't know why we would have to do that when we directly give to Canton Nutrition.
Well, I think there is some of that. You know, we give to these nonprofit organizations and then they turn around within their budget and they're giving to the same people we are.
Right.
And there's no filter, we have no mechanism to filter that either. It's not as if we send out a questionnaire saying, are you giving money to this or that?
Right.
There is some of that.
I don't know that, I, I agree with you, Commissioner, but the ones that we give to pretty much utilize what it's spent for.
Well, and I think that you're right. I think that a lot of our places that we send money to are Children's Inn. You know, they keep their money. The Helpline Center, well, they.
Keep theirs, the Compass Center keeps theirs. They have no.
But now if we were to start giving to that Rock, then I think that we would have to reevaluate.
There's some duplication of effort.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think Rock has ever been, you know, we had that for the first time in about ten years, they appeared here. And they provide services, but I don't know that we need to have any money spent to them for the.
And we, and I discussed it with them and I told them that since we already send money to the Canton Nutrition, which is what they were requesting money for, they said that would take over their payment. We don't have to worry about it.
Good.
They're, I don't want to say out, but they're, they're covered.
They're covered.
Okay.
Okay.
So then what are we thinking for these? We've got the four thousand to Forward Sioux Falls and then we've got the thirty-four thousand left to divide over.
What are the requests?
I've got the Help Center and.
So what's the Help Center's request?
The Help Center is fourteen. And Inter Lakes is sixty-four forty. Other than that, I don't have any requests.
And so we got twenty-eight, twenty-eight, four forty are the requests?
Have you received anything from the Compass Center yet?
No, I have not.
She's been at, she was down here and made a presentation here, I don't know, a few months ago. But I would imagine that they would, from all indications, and it's been weeks since I've talked to her, that they were going to make a request. So I, I, I can't explain that, but I would imagine that they, we, I wouldn't want to be, see them be totally.
No, I agree.
Excluded, you know.
This is one reason why earlier this year, when I sent out the funding request, this is one of the reasons that I wanted to do it, so that they know our timeline. Not necessarily maybe what it's always used to be or how it used to be or, so that we can tell them when we need the information. And it's, you know, like the Helpline, they sent this on April twenty-second. So they're, they're, they, they're not unaccustomed to sending this information.
Right.
And if we just ask for it in the early part of the year, then we have it for this process. It makes it a little bit smoother.
Well, if we.
And it's not an application, it's just a request.
If the, if we.
If we take a break, I don't know, we call them and find out.
If we did the four thousand for Forward Sioux Falls, we did sixty-four forty. For whose request was that?
Inter Lakes.
Inter Lakes.
And then Helpline had fourteen.
And if I, so just those two, that's ten thousand four forty. So we'd have, what, twenty-three, five, sixty left? Why wouldn't we just divide that down the middle for Compass and?
Two, one, one?
And the, the Helpline.
And then the Children's Inn out.
Well, we're, we don't have a request from them yet?
No.
I'd like to see what the Children's Inn wants to propose, Madam Chair, and what the Compass Center may have their budget set. See what their ask would be.
Well.
And then make that final determination.
So you'll be in touch with them or you?
Yeah, we can call them up, right, we'll take a break here and we'll.
Well, we don't need to do it that quick.
We're not going to take a break?
Commissioner Schmidt will take care of that when we take a break, yeah.
There you go. Perfect. Way to handle it.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
We're on what, Carapoor?
Carapoor.
That actually went down?
It did. However, I reached out to Minnehaha County because they do our Carapoor. It did. However, I reached out to Minnehaha County because they do our Carapoor. And kind of was wanting to make sure what they thought, if we were in line, you know, with what they see coming on. Um, the only question that they had is that we don't have anything under there for health insurance. Um, and they do have an option for making Cobra payments. And I know that we have paid health insurance before, so I didn't know if we wanted to, um, throw some money in there. With the numbers that the Minnehaha County gave me, um, most of them were about the same. The only thing that changed is rent went from thirteen thousand to fifteen thousand. And our casework is, went from ninety-two-nine to ninety, because I looked at the actual contract. Otherwise, I think hospitals, they recommended doing twenty thousand. And with what we've got going on at one-thirty, I'm pretty sure we know why. But then we just need health insurance if you want to put something in there. So with their, with the changes in the numbers, and I don't know if I have the, I probably don't have this part on yours. If we were to round this budget to one-sixty. That would take thirty-seven hundred into hospitals, and it looks like, you know, twenty-twenty, we paid fifty-five hundred. So I don't know if it's better to have something there, make it a round number, I don't know, um, kind of what your thoughts are.
And your, for the insurance?
Yeah, under health insurance.
What have, what have we historically paid out for health insurance every year?
Um, what I've got over the last three years is just under six thousand dollars that we paid out in twenty-twenty. I think they've got it where you, I can't remember which way we're at now. If they canceled the mandatory health insurance, or if it's reenacted, or, I know at one point they canceled the mandatory health insurance. Um, I thought I heard the other day that they reenacted the mandatory, what do they call it, the, whatever it was.
Affordable healthcare?
That's it. I'm so glad you're here for me. So last, I think I heard, is that they reenacted that. So. Does that mean that we're going to have premiums that we have to pay again, or should pay again, or?
Well, just, it's a case-by-case basis. Sometimes it makes financial sense to make those Cobra payments.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And that's, that's basically what they were saying to me. No, I don't, I was reading some of the, um, America Rescue Plan Act, and some of those funds should be able to be transferred to poor relief because of the housing and the things like that, I would think. I want to check more into it. But I think that we can offset some of these expenses with that because there are housing issues or whatever else. Whether it was from COVID or it's continued to be from COVID, that we can offset some of those numbers with. That's what I'm thinking. I'm going to double-check into it. I don't want to finalize anything yet because it's still, they don't have all the regulations out there. But there was something in there where you can help with the social services.
The management of that money is not all that clear.
It is not.
So, we're being very cautious on what we will or won't use it for.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I'm thinking on this one, is if we round this up to one-sixty, then we have just a little bit of a buffer in there for the health insurance.
That would make sense to me. I don't know what the other Commissioner's thoughts are on that. Anybody?
Agree.
Okay.
All right.
We got, uh, Terry, do you want to, you're sitting, did you, did you want to sit through this whole thing, or do you want to?
Could be days.
You want to jump in?
I don't know, I don't know how long it's gonna take for my stuff, but it's up to you.
We've got till one-thirty.
You can jump on in. Sure. And we have, um, maybe we can segue into our, um, discussion of items two and three on our agenda and four as well.
All right, so, uh, you want me to start with my budget stuff first?
Well.
Or do you want to know about the intersection projects?
Let me ask, on the budget that you've prepared thus far, do you have those, um, those projects that we did the traffic study for? Do you have those projects in this budget?
Nope, I do not.
Okay.
But mainly because we don't have the funding for it.
And what, just generally speaking, what, the long-term fix or the roundabouts, as I understand it, for both of those projects?
Those are two options, correct.
Okay. And those were the longer-term fix?
Yes.
What, what was the cost of doing those, what were the costs of doing those options?
Uh, I believe at one-oh-six, uh, it's going to be a double-lane roundabout.
Okay.
And that's going to be about one-point-eight million.
Okay. Does that include land acquisition?
Yes, they have contingency in there for that, and utility movements.
And what about the, what about the other one?
Uh, the one-ten one is going to be about, I think it was one-point-two, one-point-three million for single-lane roundabout.
Okay.
Now, both, both intersections had the option for just adding additional lanes as well, so, and again, those were, those were cheaper.
Okay.
A cheaper option, but.
And sure, we don't have any money assigned to do those projects right now?
No, we do not.
And it's not available in our budget at all? I mean, do we have the money to do those projects?
Probably not unless we want to cut a lot of Terry's other stuff.
Okay, all right. Why don't we just, yeah, let's just run through your budget and talk about those.
All right, um, I guess I'll, first I'll go through my projects list. Uh, projects for next year, uh, supposed to be County Road one-fifty-two, um, from Highway eleven to Hudson. And then County Road one-forty-three, uh, that's from one-fifty-two down to Highway forty-six. Uh, so that'll be the ethanol road. Uh, the plan was to do a one-inch mill and a two-inch overlay. Uh, for a cost of about one-point-nine million. Uh, again, uh, Commissioner Jibbin and I have been in, in contact with the DOT. Uh, because they're looking at, uh, rebuilding Highway forty-six, like, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, so, uh, we recently drove down there, and, uh, we're trying to figure out if we want to do something different. Uh, because we got some other, we might have some other issues going on with those roads and, and. It, I mean, we're opening it up to everything from a full-depth mill reclaim, um, and a new mat. Um, to, I don't know, maybe a cold-in-place recycle or something, but, and again, if that's the case, um, that might take us into a two-year project. Because if we do, like, a full-depth reclaim on that, uh, I may not have enough money to do that. We may have to intend, they like to leave those set a year before you put a mat on them. So, um, so this ties in sort of with my twenty-three project, my paved project. And that's the next seven miles to the west of this. So this here is going from Norway Center, Highway eleven, to Hudson. Uh, in twenty-three, my paved project is supposed to be from Norway Center to one-seventeen to the west. So this, this entire stretch would be part of the forty-six detour, uh, when they did that. And, uh, so we might look at doing the entire stretch on one-fifty-two. You know, I, again, we're waiting to hear back, um, we're going to see if we can get some, uh, some more studies done on the asphalt. Um, what the base looks like, because, because we may have base issues on this, these, these sections. Um, and I, with, the last thing I want to do is spend two million dollars to, uh, mill an overlay. And then five years after they get done rebuilding the road, we're going to have a crap road again. The same issues are going to be coming through. So if we got some base issues, it's something we need to probably take care of, especially with the truck traffic that we got going on down there.
Sure.
Uh, next project is the Lincoln County Bridge Projects. Uh, again, if there's a, it's a bridge on the southwest corner of Lenox. Uh, we're looking to do, um, again, this structure, I am working with the city of Lenox, uh, possibly doing a cost share on this. Um, we're looking at different options. Uh, I know they're looking in the future, possibly up to a three-lane, which is going to increase the size of the structure. Uh, but again, uh, we're still in, uh, we're kind of negotiating what they want, if they want to do anything additional on that.
And are those eligible for the, a big grant?
Uh, yes, that one would be, the top one is. Now, one thing with that one is that is also on my list for poor structures. And I'm probably going to have about two-hundred thousand dollars left over from that twenty-nineteen money that we got from that federal bridge money.
Okay.
That I'll be able to put towards that project. The second structure there is probably about a mile or so down the road on County one-oh-three to the west of Lenox, west of Quakers out there. Um, years ago, this used to be a bridge. Uh, and, uh, because I remember when I first got here, we tore that out, put in two six-foot pipe, seven-foot pipe. Well, it's not very, it's not sufficient, uh, so we would probably be looking at doing that bridge or replacing that structure with this other one. Hopefully get a better, uh, bundle them together. And again, that one currently is not a structure. It got removed from the structure back in nineteen-eighty, uh, nineteen-ninety-four, six, whatever, when we, we tore it out. So the structure we're looking to put back in there will be a bridge again. So, future-wise, it would be eligible, both of those would be eligible for a grant. Uh, the next one, DOT bridges, uh, this one here, it's just, they just closed it yesterday. Um, this is on County Road one-seventeen north of Worthing. Um, our cost share, I'm hoping it's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand, depending. Um, again, that's on the old DOT STIP program. Uh, this is the last structure on that. Um, I talked with the DOT about this, and I won't get any of the, I have it in my budget for this year. Um, but, uh, they said billing won't come out until next year, so, um, I'm going to have to put money back in the budget for that. Uh, the federal bridge grants, I got seventy-five thousand for that. Again, uh, last year, we awarded four, four structures for replacement. And again, that's going to be any cost that we're going to incur for them, for, uh, those replacements of those structures. And again, that's all DOT facilitated. Uh, the next bridge on there is Sioux County, Iowa. Uh, this is at the Fairview Bridge, um, crossing the river. They're going to be doing a deck rehabilitation. That project is happening this year. Um, and again, I did have it in my budget for this year, uh, so the money is there this year. Uh, but talking with them, their project isn't going to start for another month or two. Um, so I will not get any billing, uh, cost sharing on that until next year. And again, that one is going to be a fifty-fifty cost share. Um, we have a big grant that we awarded on the, the next structure, on County Road one-oh-five. Um, that one is a preservation, and again, uh, it's a twenty percent cost share. Total cost of this project is six-sixty-three. Um, so our, I mean, I'm figuring our cost is going to be about one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, so, uh, no resealing. Uh, I do have a couple of roads that I might be trying some, uh, base stabilization on. Uh, put that in there. Uh, microing, if we could do microing, got ten to twelve miles of that. And then I have, of course, the two, uh, road agreements, uh, one with T and one with Harrisburg, monies for those. Any questions on any of those?
These are, these are all already in your budget request?
Yes. Yeah, this is everything you guys should have had on my budget, yes. Okay?
All right.
Uh, next one, it's going to be my materials. Uh, again, I'm pretty standard. I know I, I dropped costs on some of these, uh, trying to cut, cut on budget. Um, I guess the big one there is going to be the, the, our, our paving, thirteen thousand tons of asphalt. You know, it's seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand there. I don't know, I did, I did have money in there for the township assistance, Culvert Assistant Fund. And again, that, that was going to kind of go hand-in-hand with, uh, this HB twelve-fifty-nine. I don't know if you've heard of it. Uh, boy, basically, that's, uh, money assistance for townships for, for structures over sixteen square foot in size. And I was going to throw some money in there, but, um, again, I'd, I just, with the increases of everything else, I did, I didn't feel that. I had money in there, but I took it out. So. But I think eventually, um, once that starts happening, I mean, I, I think it would probably be, you know, if we could throw in, you know, thirty, forty thousand or something a year, fifty thousand, put with the state money that we'd get for them, that would be, at least maybe do, help them out. Um, because I, because I have, I am working with townships now, any, any bridges that we're placing on township roads. Um, we are trying to do cost shares with them, trying to have them at least have a part in these costs of the bridges, which are our structures. You know, so, um, and, and, and I'm finding they're, they're receptive, so. Questions on that? Next one I have here is, uh, equipment. Uh, so next year, I have two trucks in there. And then, uh, the equipment for them. And then the other, uh, piece of equipment is a fifth-wheel trailer we'd look to possibly purchase, so.
Got to haul that skid loader around, right?
Well, we have trailers. We, we do have a really old, uh, bridge trailer. Um, it's got the old, it's the old-style rims on it, and it's going to cost quite a bit to upgrade it if we can. But, uh, it's just, it's, it's, it's a pinel hitch, and so something we'd like to get is fifth-wheel mounted one. We'd be able to haul a lot more stuff on it. Uh, this other trailer that we have, this older one, it's, it's like an eighteen-eighties model. So, I know probably six, eight years ago, we, we rebuilt the, or at least we rewired it, because we have wiring issues with it, but. Um, it's kind of in tough shape, uh, the tongue's been broke off a few times and welded back on and.
Zetco's got those killer rims on the, on the wheels yet?
Yes.
Yeah, unsafe.
Yeah.
Does that, does that fourteen-five, does that include the hitch?
Uh, yeah, that should be complete. Um, we'd got a quote, again, I got a quote back in February for this, so, or March. So I, I, I don't know, maybe it went up, I don't know. Uh, I think last time we checked, they may not be avail- available for a year or something, so. So. Questions? All right, um. So that's all my itemmed stuff. I don't know if you wanted to go through. Um, I don't think I really have a lot of changes on this sheet. Um, I will point out my repairs and maintenance. My current budget is two-twenty-two, that's going to remain the same. But if you drop down to the materials, four-twenty-six-two, where it's three-hundred-and-thirty thousand on the very right-hand side over there, that was fifty-six. But a lot of materials, I'm starting to better account for where that money is coming from, or where those materials are, trying to cost accounting. So there's a lot more items that we're, that are coming out of, um, the materials line item. Where before, those items just came out of the four-twenty-two, uh, nine, the very bottom line item. So I was just, it's just a shift in numbers, um, basically for our, 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 excuse me, our accounting side of it. Uh, down in the office, so. Um, but otherwise, uh, I got, uh, material, building materials, structure, you know, again, I, you know, I didn't know that, uh, you know, we're doing the fab shop or the, the ma- the ventilation stuff now. I mean, a lot of that should be paid for this year. Um, and then again, I got my equipment budget on there, so. Questions?
Um, not on that. Can you, can you run us through those traffic studies, though, and?
Yep.
What the results of those were?
Sure can. All right, um. I'll start with the easy one. Um, now, I know I sent you guys, or it was in the, uh, the attachment. For the agenda items, um, all these, the studies were. And I, if you, if, rather than, I know they're like fifty or sixty pages long. But the, the meat of it is in the first ten, twelve pages or something, okay? So, a lot of this is based on, um, level of service. And again, uh, level of service is basically what the acceptable delays are, what traffic delays. So urban sections are, you know, a standard is a C, C, AM is C, PM, and these are peak hours, a C. So the rural, rural, top, rural, uh, level of service, acceptable levels, and this is in our master transportation plan, are B for AM, B, PM. So when you read through this and it says this, it's failing, uh, it, it tells you what level of service on, on certain peaks are. That's kind of what it's based on, and this is the reasoning for doing it or not doing it. So, uh, we'll start on the one on 117 and 110 on that intersection. Again, currently, uh, this study, uh, this is operating at a B, both AM and PM. So right now, it's currently acceptable. For 2042, we're going out 20 years. It'll, it'll be at a level D in the AM and a level C PM. So we're starting to notice, um, in 20 years, that, that something probably needs to be done here at this intersection. So short-term, um, they do have a couple of different, um, things that we can do. But they're basically just going to look at being modifying this intersection one way or another. Now, one of their options was adding turn lanes, um, adding additional lanes to this intersection and maintaining the four-way stop. Okay? Now, uh, doing this, um, I, I think the level of services are going to be a C and a B, if you just add lanes at this intersection and maintain an all-way stop. Now, the other option they have is a single-lane roundabout on this. And 2042, um, it would be an AA. It was what it would peg out at. Now, this, this intersection here, um, I believe this one is 1.2 million, 1.3, I think, well, just under 1.3 million for the roundabout. Um, the additional lanes, I think, was about 600,000, if I'm not, if I remember correctly. Current level of service is a BB, yes. 2042, uh, leaving it as is will be a DC. Yeah. So it'd be failing in the morning. And I, you know, they're, they're trying to take into account, you know, currently, there's no, uh, there isn't any, uh, development around the school. Uh, they tried to take in account, I think, some for future growth around there. Um, but again, you know, that probably all depends, that number's all going to depend on how much growth it is around there. You know, so, so I, I could, you know, I read this and I'm like, well, you know, this isn't real, real emergency to do. I mean, we could probably wait a few years before you did this one, if you wanted, you know, but we have the information. I mean, if we're solid on what we want to do on this, you could set this up to do it three years from now and say, we're going to, you know, we're going to make sure, we're going to take care of this. And then, and putting the single-lane roundabout again in 2042, you're looking, you know, it's going to be an AA? I mean, that's going to service that, that intersection for a long time coming, you know? I mean, I would, I would just say, you know, doing the additional lanes, adding the lanes, that, that, that layout, I would hate to get into what we got into on 106, you know, if we're just going to add the lanes. I mean, if we don't have the money to do it, you know, now, then do it three years from now. But don't spend the money on just adding the lanes and hoping that's going to take care of it. Because it was in 2012 when we, when we rebuilt that intersection on Cliff. And, and we're eight years later and it's, it's failing now. You know, so we, and we need to do something, so. I, you know, whether we do it today, if you find the money, great. If not, I mean, I think, I think it's something that needs to be done, you know, we should probably get done. I'm, I'm not saying before 2040, but...
Terry, how much will land cost? You know, if you don't have development out there right now, um, land cost, it would seem to me, it would seem to me that it would be less expensive to acquire the necessary right-of-ways that you would need, as opposed to if you had development budding up against it, prices probably would increase, but...
Yep, currently, currently, there's, it's just, uh, farmland, I believe, um, on, on all four corners, well, three corners.
Yep.
The other corner is a tree, tree bank, I think, for, for the guy that lives on that southeast, uh, corner there. So it, I know they put, uh, 75,000, 100,000 in there, um, for land acquisition on this. So, and again, the numbers might be a little high, um, because of that. You know, but I know there's utilities in this intersection that would have to be done. Um, there's some drainage that had to be taken care of as well, you know, some culverts.
But I just think that, I just think the purchasing of the land so that, you know, if we have the funds to, uh, complete the project, but to get the land purchased seems to me to be the biggest thing that you have to have. And then you know you've got it and you can decide budget-wise when you want to finally put it in, but...
Well, on the master transportation plan, wasn't this one of the short-term projects? Because this was an intersection that had a lot of, um, traffic problems?
Um, yeah, it had some issues. Um, it's got some accident issues. Um, I think it pegged out maybe like number seven or eight on the intersections. Just because it, right now, currently, it's a really tight intersection. You know, there's, there's large drop-offs in the ditch, you know, radiuses are tight, culverts are short, you know, and, and we do have a problem with, with trucks dropping off the corners as they're going around, big trucks.
Well, and that's,
You know.
The traffic to me is one thing, and maybe that's not a need right now, but then the public safety is also
Yep.
another issue on that intersection. And that's why we were looking at this particular intersection in the first place, if I remember correctly.
That is correct.
Was to alleviate, um, some of those safety concerns at that intersection, so...
This one up here is not it.
What's that?
This, this one isn't the, this is, there you go, this is the one, so.
That's the one, okay, yeah.
This is the one on 1?
This is on 110, 117.
Okay.
Yep. And you see the tree bank and the, and that one quadrant there, so.
If you go back to the one, uh, are we looking at the one on 106 and Cliff Avenue?
Not yet, not yet. We did look at it, but that, we'll, we'll finish with this one first, if you have any questions, and then we'll move on to that one. If that's okay. So, again, uh, not saying we have to, but again, at some point, this is going to be, need to be redone. Uh, I know in the study, it did state that, you know, we could leave it as is and, and see once what happens when the school opens and see what kind of traffic, see if there's any additional traffic that actually comes from the school. And monitor it, you know? So, maybe we want to get it in the plans to, to do, maybe we want to, I mean, and I'm good with that. You know, if we can find money to do that one and the other one, I mean, I think we're looking at probably, what, just over $3 million to do both, so.
Well, I don't, you know, what are the thoughts of the board on this? I mean, we've talked now for, well, three years, uh, about this, um, House bill, Senate bill that would allow us to do a road and bridge levy. Numbers on that, if I'm, um, Sherry gave me some numbers on that. If we did it at the, um, max, I believe, if I'm reading this right, it'd be, we'd get 3, 3.4 million dollars to use towards road and bridge projects, and that would help us move this along if it's not otherwise available in the budget. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement. And there's also of that, the, it would be a benefit to the cities because they would then get 773,000 dollars for their roads out of this. We don't get the whole levy, 25% of it goes back to the cities.
Sure, and, and I mean, it could, they could bank that, and then if they wanted to take over a road to do with it what they, you know, if it was a county road to do it.
Sherry, we're talking city of...
That would make sense.
What city?
All cities.
All cities.
All cities get 25% of it. So based on last year's, what Tiffany was looking at, we did last year's, um, 2020 taxes payable 2021. We did the full 0.6% that we're allowed to. So it would be 4.2 million dollars. 773 of it would go to the cities, and the county would retain 3.4. Now, you don't have to do the whole max. And we can tell you, you know, whatever number you mount, you want to put in there, we can calculate it. I've got the spreadsheet pulled up. So if you're shy about the full, if you're doing it over two years, you know, you can lower that amount and handle it that way. It doesn't have to be the full six.
What did you, did you figure out what the, um, what the cost would be as far as, um, how this would affect like per 100,000 for valuation?
Well, it'd be 60 cents per 100,000.
So, a $300,000 house, what would that do to?
$180.
A year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
At the full rate.
That's the full.
So it'd be 180 for what?
A $300,000 house.
I mean, I'm just, somehow, some way, we've got to find a way to, to pay for these projects.
So...
Courtrooms.
Yeah.
Housing prisoners.
Yep.
Roads.
I would agree, and this is one thing that can alleviate some of the stress on the general fund and make the road and bridge a little bit more self-sufficient. And it grows by, um, growth in CPI every year. Now, if you wanted it to sundown, you could have it, you know, do it for five years and then take it off. But once you take it off, then you'd have to go through the whole process again.
Right.
You could lower it down to 10 cents, you know, and just keep that money flowing into the road and bridge to help support the general fund type thing. And I, I mean, and when I say support the general fund, it just means that we wouldn't have to transfer as much. And with what we've got coming up, that's probably not a bad solution.
Terry, when, in that highway study, I'm sure they did a traffic count, right? On these potential areas, because if, if you go traffic today, you've got, I don't care, even with construction, I mean, you've got bottlenecks all over the place. So, growth isn't going to slow down, it's going to probably speed up. So these two intersections are, are pretty fundamental. I mean, we got this one, but then you got the other one on Cliff we haven't hit yet. Is there any thought that if you do these, combine these projects, that you save any significant amount of money? If you were to do two of them at the same time, in other words, because they're basically the same design?
Well, first of all, the, the, the designs are going to be different on them.
They are.
On these, yes. Because the 10117 is going to be a single-lane roundabout. And what they're calling for in the 10106 and Cliff is going to be a double lane. Yeah, and, and basically what that's going to do is, your center circle is larger. Um, so that's going to, that's going to end, you know, end up being more since it's going to be a larger, larger roundabout, so. Your center size, your center circle is larger than on the double lane.
It's like the one on, uh, Southeastern Drive and 69th Street. That's a double, kind of a small double, but it's a double.
I think that's kind of a hybrid, but yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, I think it's still listed as a single lane, yeah.
Double lanes are when you have the lane all the way around, not when you have a turning lane off to the side.
Yes.
You can actually roll two lanes of traffic all the way through all the time.
Yeah.
So it's just, the one out there is a one lane.
Yes.
What, if, if you did these at, I mean, would you recommend doing these at the same time? Just, I, because you'd shut down those two intersections for a while and that might be problematic. I mean, could you get them all done in one year and still not?
I would say, yes, you could. Again, I'm, I don't know what the, you know, the schedule for contractors, but I think the one thing you would gain possibly, uh, by bidding them together would be that it'd be the same contractor, and again, you probably wouldn't do them at the same time, you know? Um, but hopefully you would save, save some money and, and probably mob, mobilization costs. You know, since they're going to be, if it's a local contract, I mean, they're going to be down close, I mean, they're not that far apart.
The one on Louise and, and 106 that we did, that didn't take all that long to put in.
No, now, on that one, uh, I think we gave them 30 days to do, uh, because I think, I think we wanted them to be in and out of there, you know, because it was going to be totally closed. So, they had some issues on that one. Workdays, they probably had their 35 days or 30 days, 30, 40 days, whatever it was. But they had, you know, I think probably close to nine inches of rain on that project, um, the entire time they had it, they had it open. So that, that really slowed down their efforts. But again, if you put a 30-day window on something, um, you're probably going to increase your costs a little bit because they know they're going to have to get it done.
When you go to the public and ask them to do this opt-out situation for this, think of the number of people that called in and were, didn't like the roundabout at first, but now totally love it. Everybody that I've ever talked to, it's the best thing you've ever done, this has expedited, everybody has been... So if you're going to expend money for something that people can actually see and experience the, uh, benefit of, I, I, I see that, uh, that has good public support because, I mean, that's what it's for. It expedites traffic. We know it's going to increase, and to our chairman and the other issues that we have, uh, it seems like, uh, the time. And, uh, money well spent, but ultimately, the taxpayers probably will decide on that.
Well, huh, that leads us to the next question. This, this has deadline. Every year we get to this, it has deadlines. So, we got to make a decision on if we're going to do it or if we're going to pass again, um, pass again on it. And the whole time, cost of construction are just going to keep going up, and we're just delaying the inevitable like we've done on so many, so many other things, unfortunately. So, I don't, you know, we need to talk about it and make a decision as commissioners, because it's our job.
Well, hindsight, if we devoted this through, what, two years ago?
We wouldn't have had this problem today, but, uh, that was not the decision of this commission.
So, just clarification, one of these would be a single lane and one would be a double lane?
That is correct. The one on 117 and 110, 117, that would be a single lane. That'd be probably pretty identical to the one that's at Louise Avenue and 106, the one that we put in two or three years ago, so.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry.
And then the one at 106 and Cliff Avenue, that would be the double lane.
Commissioner Poppins, are you on?
Commissioner Poppins is here.
All right, did you have any comments or want to give any input?
Well, we need to continuously improve our roads. Uh, our funding mechanism has been limited due to the freeze many years ago that did not anticipate the growth that we were experiencing, so. I sported it, uh, two years ago when we looked at it, uh, I think we should start a quick conversation with the municipality and see if they're ready to have an influx of revenue and how they disperse it and then, uh, move forward with it.
You think they're going to say they don't want an influx of revenue?
I don't really know if we have a choice. No, you know, I think that, you know, that they recognize what's in their best interest as well.
Next one?
I'd like to know.
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to move it forward. We've got a meeting on the 6th, so I think we need to talk about the numbers and put it on our next agenda and talk about it some more. But I think we need to know what those numbers are and if we can kind of get some...
When is the absolute deadline?
July 15th, isn't it?
July 15th?
Yep.
Okay, I would agree.
We have, we have time if we do it on July 6th.
Okay.
That's it.
Let's do it.
So, are we, are we thinking to spread this out or to do the, um, to do the 0.6? Or just, I mean, what are the thoughts of the board? If we did the 0.6, ideally, we could do these two projects. Um, if we did half of that, we could maybe be able to do two projects in two years.
Wait, at half of that, the 0.3, we would have, based on this year's valuation, 1.7, so.
So we could do one of them.
One of them a year.
A year if we did that. And then if we do this, we'd, you know, the other decision we have to make is, are we going to put a sunset on it? Or are we going to, um, just put it in place to help, um, support the highway budget?
Well, knowing, you know, and you, I like a sunset. I realize, of course, that, uh, you know, Minnehaha County does a lot of interesting things. They passed a tremendous opt-out, but they only took part of it. And it's kind of like a draw account, because they took a certain portion of what they wanted. And now, if they have supplemental things that they have... And now, if they have supplemental things that they have to do, they can go back to that opt-out and, and now initiate more. So, when you look at that, um, that's one version, on the other version, we're always thinking, you know, short term. And one of the things that we were challenged to look at for these courtrooms was to look at two thousand twenty and not just look down the road a ways, because growth is not going to stop, so. When you compare the necessities for the two roundabouts and how that would affect overall growth, it seems to me that the two of them are fundamental. And I like to see them get done on a timely fashion, because it could be cheaper to do it that way. As opposed to, we could do it the more conservative way and do one a year. But, uh, on the other hand, if you go to all the trouble of going through an opt-out and you have the cities, uh, in back of you, and you have a cause to show what you're going to spend the money for and how long you tend to spend the money for, I think a company, uh, the combined total is the best route, that's my feelings today.
And so you're, are you in support of the point six or something less than that? I mean, I know we don't have to spend it.
If we did a point six, if you took a look at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, no one wants to pay taxes, understood. But a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar house.
Hundred and eighty dollars.
Hundred and eighty dollars.
Hundred and eighty dollars, excuse me. What did I say?
Hundred and eighty thousand.
A hundred, I mean, a hundred and eighty dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar house, okay, we'll get that right. Not everybody has a three hundred thousand dollar house, you know, so there isn't, that may be the standard figure. Majority of the people that are going to pay for these things are going to live in Sioux Falls anyway, so.
So, do we want it, do we want it on for the, um, sixty cents?
Well, I think we should have both of them on.
Okay.
Madam Chair, and we can further discuss on the sixth on which one would be the more palatable to the majority, but I, I would like to see, right now, I'd like to see a five-o vote on, on something like this, so we all can come to an agreement.
And then, um.
But I'd like to hear Terry on his one oh six and how he's going to fit that baby in there, because that thing is tighter than tight.
Oh, that's kind of amazing to see.
How are you going to do that?
All right, well, uh, we'll go with what the study first, the results of the study. Uh, so currently, level of service for this is a level C, CC. Um, twenty forty-two, with the current configuration, level of service is going to be DF.
That's not this one.
No, Jake, can you go to the next one, or that other one you had, there you go. Okay, so, uh, twenty forty-two, it's DF, um, so currently, it's a CC. So, according to our master transportation plan, uh, which pegs out rural roads, um, as a BB, we're already failing. Now, if we consider this an urban area, which it's really not, that it's getting close, CC, it's, it's just passing, um, currently. Uh, as, as configured right now, with the turn lanes that we have now, um, the turn lanes for three of the directions, the queuing lanes are too short, as they are. So, the other option on this would be to add a turn lane, a right designated right turn lane on all four corners of this intersection as a current design, and then adding the queue length on the left turn lanes for all four corners. So, and I think that cost was about one point two, one point three million, something like that. The intersection is, uh, just under one point eight million for, for the roundabout. You're asking how, how are we going to get this, this in there? Uh, as you can see, the alignment on this, it's going to be shifted slightly, um, the road alignment is going to be to the south. Um, and then, I think it's fairly close on Cliff Avenue, but it's just going to be mainly south, and I think it's actually west just a little bit. So it's actually coming over, you know, um, to that, to the southwest corner, is where it's going to be kind of, um. It's going to be tight, and I think on the contingency on this, I think they got a hundred and, they got a hundred, hundred thousand for right-of-way contingency on this one. In, into that, one point seven five nine million. Um, they do have a hundred and fifty thousand for, uh, utility contingency, because there's going to be a lot of utilities that I think are going to have to be moved in this.
Because you've got a lot of fiber.
Well, the big, the big one is going to be that, the XL energy line.
XL energy line, yeah. Terry, how does this work if you've got two-lane roads, uh, in all directions, and you've got a double-turning lane? Um, I'm just thinking, if I'm coming from the west, going east, um, okay, I have an option of going around and going straight ahead or going north. I can turn and go south. So that's the, that's the option, because it's always to be able to turn off and not do the whole roundabout situation, yeah.
Now, just as a, a tidbit of information, I don't know if you've, uh, been keeping up with the city of Harrisburg, but I think they've moved forward with doing a double-lane roundabout at Cliff and Willow. So, one ten and one twenty-three down there.
Is that what they're?
Done by Casey's.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe, um, from what I've read, it sounds like that's what they're putting down there. And I think they thought they were going to do construction later this year, sometimes, so. So again, uh, I'm assuming with any of these projects, we may have to do full closures. Um, again, we really didn't delve into that, um, but that would probably be the easiest, quickest, um, to get them, to get the projects done, is having full closures.
How long was the road closed on Louise for the other roundabout?
Well, it was, it was actually, I think it was probably close to two months, I mean, but it was only supposed to be thirty days, but again, they had bad rain and they had other issues.
Sure.
You know, so.
This is called a double, Terry?
Yes, this will be a double-lane roundabout.
This reminds me of the one on Southeastern, I travel that about every other day, but that always has those turnout lanes as well.
The only thing with that one is I don't think, if you're in the outside lane, I don't think you can ta- continue all the way around on that one. You have to turn. And initially, that's what I was kind of thinking that this would peg out as, just having, that would be, you know, the right turn, that other lane would be a right turn only, but, um, that's not what it's coming up as. And even in the, the traffic study that, uh, Harrisburg School did, um, they had done, or earlier this year, I think, uh, I think a draft came out of that for the one up on Eighty-Fifth and Cliff, the school. Um, that one, it, it said we needed, uh, designated right turns, uh, on several of the intersections, but again, they weren't specifically studying this intersection.
Would there, so if we were to, if we were going to do something like Senate Bill One and, um, do the, um, road and bridge opt-out, would these projects be ready to go to bed, um, beginning of next year? Or would you, when would you think they'd be ready to go to bed?
Um, I'm guessing we might be able to go to bed early, like, early winter, maybe, maybe January, February.
That's, well, that's what I was thinking, that would be typical when.
I think, I think the big thing is going to be notifying, or trying to get utilities notified that this is happening or whatever. Um, but again, that's going to be part of the project, because those won't get moved until the project probably begins.
Sure.
Um, but I, I think the, the one on one seventeen, one ten, I think that one would be pretty easy to get completed, because I think that one's, you know, because I think we can probably go pretty close to the plans we had on the one up north there, um, off of Louise. But this one here, you know, I, I think they'll have plans, like I said, I, I think they'd be able to get it done if we, if we had a decision for them, you know? And I, like I told them, I said, "We may not know until, you know, August or something." You know, because if we do try to do the opt-out, if it goes to a vote, you know, the, I mean, that's going to be a little ways out before we know if it passes, before we can proceed.
Right.
But.
I'm just, that intersection, if, if Harrisburg's going to, um, improve their intersection and put a roundabout there, how much more is that going to increase the traffic flow there and the limits on this particular intersection?
Well, if that speeds up there, out, out of, out of town going north on Cliff, there'll be a lot more traffic coming down Cliff heading north for those stoplights, yeah. That's a level C, you said, right now?
Currently, it is, yes.
CC?
CC, yes.
And it's going to be a what?
It's going to be a DF.
F.
In twenty forty-two. But again, a lot of, I mean, they have the twenty-two number, it's going to be a CC as well. Um, but that new school, I think that's where you're going to start noticing it's going to be failing, begin failing.
Oh, sooner, yeah.
Because I think that school opens in twenty-three, I think. You know, but again, we studied current conditions, and then next year's number, and then twenty years from that. So we didn't do anything like, you know, ten years out. Um, and again, I think, from, from what I've heard from Harrisburg, the school, I think by twenty-eight is when they're going to, uh, build the other part of the high school up there, you know?
So this would be by their freshman academy, they call it?
Yes, the one at Eighty-Fifth and Cliff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is double?
Double, double, double lane, yes, that's correct, yes.
And they also have, eh, expect a, a kindergarten class next year of one thousand students.
Um, Commissioner Aaron's, are you with us?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, um, we're, have you heard our conversation up to this point? We were talking about Senate Bill One and our deadline for doing something with that, if we're going to, is July fifteenth, so we'd be looking at doing something next week. And we were talking about, you know, amounts and percentages, if we would, you know, if the consensus was to look at the point six and what we'd want to see on the agenda next week that we could talk about, um, if we were going to look at doing both of these projects.
Question I have for Sherry is, when do we accumulate all of the money that it collects? So, I mean, property taxes are collected biannually, right? So, we would have half of the three point four million right after we collect the, the first installment of property taxes, then we'd have the second three point four million, uh, after the second collection. So would it take us a full year eh, to collect that money? So that's my first question, and where I'm going with that is, if you pass this thing on by July fifteenth, do we have all the money we need to do these two projects by next, by next construction season? Like, how would that work in terms of, do we have enough money, um, and when, when would the payment be due? I mean, I assume there's some payment upfront, then there's some payment after the project is over, right?
I would, I would think that there would be maybe engineering payments upfront, um, the construction price, uh, payments would probably be at the end. Our full, we, if all the taxes were collected, the full amount would be collected by the end of November. Oct- October, sorry, by the end of October. Which might put us right in line for the payment applications. I mean, but the, the thing I, I would probably recommend would be to put the full point six on there, do the first project, let the money build up, and then in twenty twenty-three, do the second project.
Well, yeah, and I want to, I, I heard Terry say something, he said he thought Harrisburg was going to do construction on their roundabout later this year. Um, eh, eh, just a correction on that, Harrisburg is planning on doing construction on their roundabout as soon as school gets out next year. So that's when they're going to start the roundabout. They, there may be like a little bit of engineering or whatever later this year, but actual road closures in Harrisburg are going to be right after school gets out next year.
Well, that would probably work out better to have ours then, about the same time, that whole road could just be shut down.
We're getting a, we're getting a grimace from Terry here.
But where else are they going to turn on that, if that's?
Like, I'm not opposed to that, I, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, there might be, there might be some additional economies of scale, too, because of, if they can do both of those projects, and then if Harrisburg's going to be getting X amount of dollars, I mean, maybe that plays into the picture.
Yeah, eh, Harrisburg has already worked out their financing piece for how they're going to finance the, uh, project. So they have their financing piece in place right now.
Because if we did, if we did the six, uh, the sixty, um, cents, Harrisburg would be getting, um, a little over sixty-one thousand dollars from us, and I don't know, helps pay some of their engineering fees probably. Or whatever they, we don't dictate what they use the money on, but they do need to use it for road projects within the municipality. Thoughts, anybody? Commissioner Poppins?
You know, it's, uh, again, that, let's see if we can get a quick, uh, conversation with all these cities to make sure that they're ready to utilize the funds versus just dashing it for the tax, for the, for the purposes of the taxpayer to get the information, but we've got to come up with funding, and we sported it two years ago, um, it, it's a, you know, un- unfortunate way that gets paid for is through taxes one way or the other. We can not do it, and then keep the taxes where they are, or address the issue and, and be upfront with the taxpayers, and let them know where their funds are going, and this way, they know where their funds are going.
Well, that is the nice thing about it, they can, they know where their funds are going with this particular opt-out. Anybody else have anything? We'll put this on the agenda for next week. Um, and then I don't know, can you put your, your fact sheet, um, with that, with the agenda packet, so? And put it on the website so that everybody knows what we're looking at, and maybe put some facts on there about the breakdown per hundred thousand evaluation, so people are clear on what that would do to their taxes.
Okay. Do you want to just base that on the sixty, do you want some different scenarios all the way down to?
I think, I think, I think do sixty, I think do thirty, um. I mean, it's, it's simple math, but it, sometimes it helps to visualize it, so.
Yeah, because basically with the sixty, we'll get both projects, with the thirty, it's only one.
Right. Okay. Anything else, Terry? Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, do we need to specify if this is going to have a sunset, or if this is going to be just a, a continuous fund at this time, or should we put it on the agenda?
Well, I, I think, you know, we haven't done this before, I, I'm not opposed to a sunset, I mean, if, and then when it comes time, if we need to, you know, do another opt-out, at least the taxpayers are going to see what we did with the money and, um, see the improvements in the roads, and hopefully would be supportive of continuing that, but, I'm, I'm fine looking at a sunset, I, we need to get some projects done, so.
I think Commissioner Schmidt also agreed with that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know what that number of years is, is it five years, is it ten years, um, anybody have any?
I think if Madam, Madam Chair, a lot will depend on if we do the max, or if we're doing half of it, if we're doing the max, I think five year would be appropriate for doing less than that, or half, maybe ten years. Um, just to have a game plan.
And what we could do is we could do the max, knowing that we need to get these projects done, and then the next year, we can taper it down over the five years.
Yeah, we're not locked into that percentage.
Because we'll get growth in CPI on whatever it is after the first year.
Thoughts about doing that?
Yeah, I agree, I'm, I'm going to want to see, uh, Yeah, I agree, I'm, I'm gonna wanna see a sunset provision in it. I don't know if I would go the full five years or not, but I think like Commissioner Poppins said, if people see the projects getting done, there may be, that would generate support. And, uh, you know, in the past, I said I'd like to see these things tied to specific projects. And I think that's a way of just building confidence with the public, they know where the money went, they know how it was spent. And, uh, you know, they, they can get behind, they can get behind these projects knowing that, uh, it's gonna sunset, it's not gonna be a perpetual tax increase on them to go fund other projects, uh, that don't have to do with roads and bridges.
Right, we, you know, and we can use...
And after a couple of years.
And we'd be able to use, you know, if, if we did this for, even if it was two or three years, we'd have some additional funds available to do the traffic studies and, and figure out those projects. So.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage two or three years, I mean, as a good sunset. Terry, how many years has this been on the radar?
Uh, what, what specifically?
These.
These intersections?
Yes.
Uh, the 106 one has been, uh, since probably 18, 19, for sure. I mean, ever since that, that intersection got rebuilt, turn lanes added with those stoplights. We've had an issue, probably a higher occurrence of, of accidents through there. And I know that, I think this one pegged out like number three in the county in our transportation plan of uh, frequency of accidents, you know, so. Something, I, I personally, I think something needs to be done on this one. You know, and, and the lane, the lane adding, additional lanes, you know, we would be getting rid of, I just wanted to bring that up. You would be getting rid of the hanging lights that we have now, and they'd be permanent, um, stoplight mast arms. You know, so that, that project was 1.2 and probably 300,000 of that is just for the lights. So, it's spending to do that, but.
And that wasn't a, that wasn't a 20-year fix, if I...
No, no, cause in 20 years, it's, it comes close to, comes close to failing again in 20 years.
So that, that doesn't make sense to put our money there.
It still passes, but it's getting close, correct? So.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, um, we'll get back to our budget. Why don't, do we wanna take a 15-minute break? Or we'll just say come back at 11? Guys, alright with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with me.
Alright.
Sure.
We'll be in recess then until 11.
Okay.
Order, we're off from our recess. I wanted to circle back on the state's attorney's budget as it relates to item five on our agenda. Um, do we have Commissioner Poppins and Commissioner Aaron's with us?
Commissioner Poppins is here.
Commissioner Aaron's, are you on? Okay, well, we've got Commissioner Poppins, so we'll just go ahead. Now for, well, probably at least a year, year and a half, we've been talking about, um, commissioner support staff and perhaps longer than that. Um, when we originally talked about this, if I recall correctly, we talked about a commissioner manager or somebody to handle, um, the day-to-day things, um, for the commission. And we're getting to a point, we've got Mr. Golden, who's our civil deputy state's attorney, and his, he's been having to do quite a few things up in the state's attorney's office that don't necessarily relate to commission business. And we've got the courthouse, um, issues, we've got the marijuana issues, I, and, um, I just think we're getting to the point where we need somebody to help us manage some of these things, solely for the commission, including the, um, funds that we're receiving, um, for the COVID relief. We've got $11 million there to manage, um, and I think that needs some oversight, and I think it probably needs to have, um, some legal oversight. And I'm worried that the civil, um, deputy right now that we have is maybe, spread a little too thin and not able to, um, there's not enough hours in the day for him to get everything done that he needs to get done. But with that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Golden to come up and kinda tell us what the status of things are as far as the civil, um, aspect of the state's attorney's office.
When I started here about a year and a half ago, the status was is that there's a little bit of a transition.
Can you just, I know that microphone's short and everything, but if you can, I wanna, I wanna make, yeah, I wanna make sure everybody can hear you.
When I came in, um, everything was in a transition as far as, you had an attorney here for 18 years who did a lot of projects for the commission. When I came in, uh, we also had some individuals leave our office, deputy, uh, senior paralegal, excuse me. And what I found about the, what we've been facing is a huge growth in caseload. So as we were adjusting and trying to hire, I found myself assisting on the criminal side. Part of that was because I was willing to do it because I have quite a bit of experience at it, and so I volunteered for a lot of it. A lot of it was necessary just because we were trying sometimes three cases in a row, and that was too much for a single attorney to handle. But just on the civil side, uh, the county has seen a growth in its tax deeds, we've seen a growth in the different issues coming. The initial jail and then the courthouse committees has eaten up a tremendous amount of my time. But there's also been a growth for employees here, and so one of the things that I also do is I advise HR when it comes to employment issues. Sometimes those are on taxes, sometimes those are on, um, leave. We've had issues with disabilities. COVID ate up a significant amount of time. I am pulled in multiple different directions. I know the commission has talked about these different committees for the jailhouse or for the regional jail, potentially for the courthouse. Those are things that our office was, we had scheduled for the courthouse. And so that eats up staff time and my time as well. At the time, my paralegal was doing, working on grand jury at the same time as doing the civil side. So it isn't just myself that gets pulled in multiple directions, and really it's hard to focus just simply, or simply on the civil side. Because our office has one of everything we need, but sometimes we don't have two where we do. So, um, it's gotten progressively worse over probably the last six or seven months, specifically with the marijuana issue or the marijuana statutes coming into play. There's a task force that's in place. I think that the commissioners would like me present during those. We generally have been able to do that, but now we have now, uh, with Minnehaw County having a court up there, we're going to, from time to time, possibly have to send a deputy out. And we run three courtrooms down here at times. So where there is seven attorneys, it sounds like you have plenty of coverage. But when you have attorneys going to three different courtrooms and then myself leaving the county, it leaves us very short. Um, one of the things I would say that probably has been shorted the most is the department heads, when they try to get a hold of myself, sometimes it takes me several days to get back to them just because I have other, other matters that I have to do. Sometimes it's on the civil side, sometimes it's assisting in covering courtrooms, because it's very difficult with seven individuals with three courtrooms. If somebody takes a day off, somebody's gotta cover their cases. And so, just, I think we've already been through with the courthouse and everything else, the number of cases that we've increased. Right now, on the felony side for this year, we're up 80%. Misdemeanors are the same. I think we're up about 20% on the tax deed filings. There are several things I would like to get to, such as the high, old highway shop out here. I think we need to do a quiet title action, I haven't begun that because I don't wanna start litigation, let it sit and not complete it. So.
And I'm assuming, you know, if we do some of these road projects that we're talking about, you would be involved in land acquisition, and if there were a need for eminent domain proceedings and that sort of thing. That you would be in charge of, of those things as well.
Yes, I'd be involved. I usually review when Terry has his bids or contracts, that comes into the office to be reviewed. So, every time we expand or do a new project or get a new individual, it does add a little bit of legal work each and every time.
And as far as the, the funds that we receive for the COVID money, how, I mean, how is that gonna be managed? I mean, I know, you know, we've got, we can only spend it on very particular things at this point, and, do you, I mean, right now, do you don't have, you aren't able to manage those funds, I'm assuming?
I would not have the time to do it.
So, you know, when, when we talk about this, I mean, there's a couple ways to look at it. I mean, we could have a county manager to handle some of those things. But it almost makes more sense, I guess, to me to add a civil deputy, state's attorney, who is either, um, has your level of experience, which obviously is gonna be a greater expense to the county, or to have maybe somebody that maybe doesn't have as much experience. So, they can maybe pick up some of the slack, if they need to, in the state's attorney's office itself, where you would be able to work solely on, civil matters for the commission. And I don't, I've, I don't know what, uh, State's Attorney Wallman's thoughts are on that, but do you have any insight into that?
Uh, we have discussed it, it would probably be easier to find somebody who comes in more as an entry-level position. Uh, we could certainly train them to do a lot of the, um, tax deeds, the other litigation that we have go on, or administrative processes that we do constantly. And one of the other things we're in the middle of right now is hearings on the challenges to the property, or the property assessments. So we had a hearing last week, we'll have another one. Those are things that could be turned over, or we could teach someone else, to handle all those type of issues, which would free up my time.
When you have those administrative hearings, are you, are they doing those virtually, or are you actually driving to peer for those hearings?
They're still doing them virtually. They used to be a, a drive to peer, but at the moment, it's virtually.
Okay. I don't know, uh, commissioners, what are your thoughts? Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Golden?
Well, Bill, I've certainly called you on, but I've made on several different things. One, we have spent an inordinate amount of time on the courthouse issues, and you've had to do the research. We now face cannabis, and cannabis is going to be a multi, you know, it's gonna be a lot of detail that we're gonna have to be responsible for. And then we have other things that probably look at not only, uh, the jail issue, as you've heard, now we have, is probably satisfied for now. But if we look down the road, we don't have a solution right now, that does not work. We have redistricting that's going to come to play, which you're gonna have. And then, what we continually get is, uh, to me, as commissioners, we get into drug into a drainage issue, and it is just like, it came at you without any background, without any information. We don't look at our future land use or coordination on where we would like to go with certain things and how we coordinate the best possible place. Cities always have a plan where they wanna put their multifamily, where they wanna put their single family, where they wanna put commercial. We don't do that. Then we got the management, as our chairman has said, about COVID funds, about the American Relief Funds. And all of those issues get dumped somewhere on your plate, and you don't have room enough for that. And one of the things that, we came back from peer last week, and we have all these counties there. We are, we are, for our size, we're the only county that does not have some kind of person designated that works for the commission itself to make better planning and better use of our decision-making. I, I, I think Brookings County, you know, which is a much smaller county, Brown County, for example, they all have two or three people. And, and, and Minnehaw County has how many? Four or five in their office? So when I look at what we're asking you to do, which is totally to me unfair, but putting somebody in the state's attorney's office to free your time up with your background makes very good business sense to me. And you train some young person that come out of, are graduated with their degree, and they've got best training in the world because they get to cover all the areas. I think we got a win-win situation in doing that, and the cost is reasonable, very reasonable. I know we quoted costs of 100,000 and some odd dollars, but we're not even in that ballpark anymore. So, it seems very fiscally responsible.
Madam Chair, so this is a full-time position for the state's attorney and for the commission?
It would, it would free Bill up, and I don't wanna speak for State's Attorney Wallman, but if that would free you up to dedicate your expertise to the commission business, because we have a lot of things going on that are ripe for litigation. And if you're worrying about who you're subpoenaing in a homicide case on the back of your head, I mean, I worry that there's things that maybe are getting missed on our end, which are ripe for litigation and could end up costing the county and taxpayers a lot of money, potentially. So I think we're, we need to cover that and have somebody dedicated to those things, um, moving forward. And I, I kinda would like to hear from State's Attorney Wallman to see if that is something that, because I understand anybody that works in his office works at his discretion. So he would need to be on board with this, and I, I, I wanna think he will be. We chatted about it a little bit, but not in any, you know, great detail on how it would work or anything. So, do you know, is he willing to put you in that spot?
That, that was our discussion on this, would be, um, I would be dedicated to the commission and those other roles. Um, whereas the other person would pick up, um, more of the administrative and routine thing, business that we have going on for the county and for civil, and that person would still have some capacity to criminal. I believe in the budget, we're still asking for an additional criminal attorney just because those numbers just, they just continue to increase. And we're just running out of bodies. Uh, it becomes very difficult to go to court when you have to have three to four people in court. If somebody takes a vacation day, that just means somebody else is doubling up. And so, that was part of the role that I would get pulled into, this would prevent that from happening. So, you could give me more tasks or more, uh, projects to work on. And we would have somebody else to cover the other, the other areas that I have been in the office.
Sure, I mean, I, I don't, when I see you every week, I don't see you every day, when I see you every week, I just feel like you're spread too thin.
I won't disagree with you.
So.
Bill, let me ask you a question. With all of these increases, felonies up, misdemeanors up 80%, what's the tension in the state's attorney's office, honestly?
We are a small group who get along well. But probably what bothers me the single most is when people tell you, I don't wanna take a day off because that means somebody else in the office has to double up and do my job. So when somebody takes two days off, they apologize to everybody. So, I'm going to take, um, the first and the second off, and, uh, I feel a little guilty about that. But this will be, I think, the first time this year I've used any vacation time. And so to get it down back to the 80 hours, I have to start taking something now. But we have people in the office who are doing that right now, which is if you take a week off, somebody else is doubling up. So that's where we're at.
Well, I, I don't know what, you know, if we're, I don't know what the next step is. You know, if we get a job description out there and see what we get, but I think as a commission, we need to decide if this is something that we need to do, and I think it is. Again, I, I think we're just, we, we are faced and we're up against... Again, I, I think we're just, we, we are faced and we're up against a wall on so many things. And I think we need to give the state's attorney's office the help that it needs so they can effectively assist us, um, and not be running in ten different directions every day. What are the thoughts of the commission? Commissioner Poppins?
I think Commissioners may well know where I sit on this issue. Um, I've been advocating it for many years. Um, hopefully now we're at, finally at a time where we can have a consensus that will agree that to prepare for our future, we need to have this assistance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Aaron's, are you with us? No? Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Do we have anybody internally that could handle the, the commission part of it?
I don't believe so. Um, first of all, if, if, if somebody is giving us legal advice, I mean, that's, for the most part, privileged information. I think as a commission, we want that privilege for one thing. And I think it does need to be somebody with a legal background. I don't, you know, unless you had somebody that, you know, maybe had a master's or a doctorate in public administration. But I think the legal aspect is where we need it, because we are looking at so many things that have a legal aspect to them, um, that need to be looked at with a detail-oriented eye, so that we can do what's right for the taxpayers and, um, on those issues that we're facing. So I, I don't think there is anybody that we would currently have that would have the qual- the qualifications that we need for this type of a position. I don't know. Do you have any other thoughts on that, Mr. Golden?
If, if you want somebody to work, I mean, typically, if you're talking about somebody who'd be a commission assistant, somebody else like that, you'd expect them to have a public administration degree. And I'm not really sure how this always works, but that individual's probably going to be more expensive to hire than the individual, uh, a deputy state's attorney. They'll have a doctorate degree, a juris doctorate, but, um, we can probably hire somebody cheaper doing that and train them. Um, do we have somebody internally within the county itself? I don't know if we'd have somebody inside of our office, one of the other attorneys who may be interested in the position. We haven't.
Well, and I.
We haven't done anything with that.
You know, for what it's worth, too, I, I almost feel like a separate, if we put somebody, if we give the state's attorney's office another employee to help do this, I also think it takes some of the politics out of it that could come with having a county manager, type of position. So I think that also has its benefits.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Not to sound like a broken record, but the other little caveat is, is we're out of space. We'll have to scramble with John to find a, an office for him if they're gonna act independent. But even if we're adding space up into the, or a position up in the state attorney's office. And Bill, um, you know how tight you're up there and what it's gonna take to add one, if not two, people up there. And this is only the, this year, and it's not gonna stop, so.
Right. And what, you, you had a question, Cherry?
Yep, so we're thinking of adding another deputy state's attorney. We've got the one request, so then we would just have a duplicate request of what we currently have, which would free up Bill's.
Right, so we've, the budget has one FTE in it for next year?
Well, it's not in it yet. That's part of the approval process for the next meeting. So.
Okay.
Basically, what, what I'm thinking that you're saying is just take another photocopy of this and say that you want two full-time employees and then not have a separate commission.
That's what I, that's what I'm thinking, as long as State's Attorney Woolman is on board with going this route, and I think he is, um.
Yes, that's my understanding, and I can probably grab him, have him come down and reassure you if you would like.
I don't want to put him on the spot, but I, I kinda would like to hear from him. So maybe I do want to put him on the spot.
That's what I mean.
Bill, clarify for me, um, the one individual that you were thinking of, the FTE, that had certain qualifications, um, were they a little more than the individual that we were talking to free up your time? It seems to me would be somebody fresh out of law school. This is their first job. This is their first opportunity to apply what they've learned. So that, the salary isn't that high. I mean, that's a fairly, I mean, that's not that much money. We're talking about half or two-thirds of what we originally had talked about.
Yes, that would be the intentions, is that, I mean, what we've been having to do at this point in time is we've had difficulties recruiting experienced attorneys, and so we've been having to hire and train. We can do that in the civil side, um, train somebody, do the administrative processes. A lot of the stuff that takes, like the tax deeds and stuff, it's a lot of paperwork. It's a lot of notifying people and keeping track of it. But it is something that we can train somebody to do. Administrative hearings, we can train somebody to do.
All rise.
Literally just tuned up the YouTube, YouTube channel. I got back from court and here's my name, so.
Good morning.
Apparently somebody wants to put me on the spot.
I, I don't want to put you on the spot. Um, so your thought about adding somebody, um, on the civil side of things so that Bill could be dedicated to us, is that something that is gonna work in for you, or, I mean, what are your thoughts about it?
Uh, I, I would be in support of that. I, I think it would be a good idea. Bill and I have talked a little bit about it. I think we've had just a casual conversation about it as well, as it relates to, uh, that position versus the, uh, county manager position. I, I think, you know, the unique, uh, situation that we had, or not situation, but somewhat unique to my office and our relationship with you individual commissioners is the legal, uh, aspect of the attorney-client privilege and, uh, the, also the fact that we don't play politics. I mean, we, we play it right down the middle of the fairway. So we're gonna take what you want as commissioners, go out and affect, uh, that on your behalf. And we've got a lot of things that we're managing right now, and I think we've all noted that, uh, Bill is getting tugged in a lot of different directions. Um, just, we've had to bring him into some criminal prosecutions to, to provide some assistance to that team as well. Uh, hopefully that'll be offset with the, with the new FTE. But additionally, I think if we've got any building projects coming up or anything like that, uh, it's just a lot for one, one attorney to do and one person to do. And, uh, I know Commissioner Poppins had brought up the space consideration. We've talked around about doing a couple of different things, some available space that we could find here in the office to ma- or in the building, maybe to set up sort of a standalone, uh, group of, uh, uh, you know, sort of that civil team, uh, where the commission could go meet with the counsel outside of my office, but in a, maybe in a different area in the building, so.
Sure.
But I, I would be in support of it. I think that, uh, I think that it would help, and I think that it's a good idea versus the county manager position. Yeah, I think, I just literally tuned in and I heard Bill talking about, you know, sort of that pedigree or that resume that we'd be looking for, uh, for an individual that would serve as a county manager. And I think, again, you'd need that MPA with some years of experience. Whereas I think my team has that years of experience. And if we had another dedicated attorney to the, to the effort, um, I think that we could get that for cheaper, so to speak.
Mm-hmm, sure. All right. That answered my question. Make sure you were on board with giving us Bill.
Okay, yep. I have had it, so. All right. Any, any other, any other questions, or?
I don't, I don't have any other questions. Well, actually, I do. So if you're gonna bring somebody on, um, another deputy to work, you know, perhaps under Bill and do civil, maybe a splash of criminal here and there, 'cause you need it, what, um, what kind of an individual would you be looking for to take Bill's place? Like, was that an entry-level position, or do you, I mean, we could throw it out there as all, and I guess you, maybe you get some experience.
I, I would probably want some experience, uh, someone with some civil litigation experience. And, uh, I don't know, like you said, throw it out and see what, what comes back.
Right.
You know, our, our hiring processes in the last couple of years have been, I mean, we've had, I think the last deputy position we had open, we maybe had, you know, eight to ten applicants. And of those eight to ten, really, only a few of them were, were licensed and qualified and ready to go. So if we, if we did something that was a little bit more exclusive with the civil arena, um, and maybe looked at, uh, at that, at the salary schedule to see where we could plug somebody in and get them a little more based upon qualifications, that would probably help for recruitment.
Sure. Do you know how many civil deputies Manyah County has?
Four or five, at least.
Are they up to that many?
Yeah. Yep. You know, and I, uh, I, I know that they just, I think the sheriff's office just requested a dedicated, uh, attorney from that office.
They did? Didn't they? They got one, didn't they?
They got one as well. So that was just Sheriff Milstead saying, I need somebody, um, not necessarily that needs to be officed in my, in my area, but I just need somebody that I can work with exclusively on various projects and have them dedicated to the, to, to sort of his mission. Law enforcement, grant funding, the various employment relations that are present with that department.
Sure.
So.
All right. So what do we need to do, Bill, moving forward? Would be our next step if we want to do something on this?
I would suggest putting on for the next meeting.
Okay.
And then addressing it at that time. That way we, um, can make sure that it's properly noticed and.
Sure, as a motion or discuss, motion and discussion.
Bill, Bill, would you still be, while you're dedicating the lion's share of your time, would you still be available to assist the state's attorney's office on issues that may come up because of somebody has a family emergency, or somebody needs, uh, extended period of time to leave? You know, something like that?
I, I guess what we've discussed and what I would envision is, is that, um, the commission would come first. Those projects would come first. I'm still in the office. I'm still gonna answer questions, help out, do things. But I would be last on the list to get pulled off and do something. If I go, it's because we truly don't have anybody else, and we should have enough staff to make that rare. That'd be the goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a side note, um, if you're planning on advertising this year, we do have almost seventy-two thousand dollars in the commission's budget that we had set up for a commissioner assistant type thing, which I think, because it's all under the general fund, we can shift those funds to the state's attorney.
Right.
For the, so it's not gonna throw their budget too far out.
Right, and we're, I know we're not talking about wages and that stuff today, but yeah, I mean, that makes sense.
But yeah, so those funds are somewhat there.
Sure.
Maybe not fully what we would need, but.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, um, what do we have left on the budget? We had a, there was an increase in soil conservation, and we had an increase in the ag building. John's not here, so maybe we want to let him talk about that next time.
Do you have that down, Cherry? What that was, is that for remodeling of something, or is that for that 4H, uh?
So if you look behind the 4H or the egg building budget sheet, the bottom half of his bud- or the spreadsheet that he sent is for the egg building. Do you see it?
Yep.
Was it, it was for some utilities and?
I think utilities to be placed out at 4H, um, twenty thousand dollars for furniture and minor equipment. Of course, then there's the land payment.
Well, why don't, why don't we have John talk about that next time?
Yeah, I, I want to talk, have him talk about, too, getting a determination on sewer and water, if that can be utilized for the 4H grounds as well.
I've heard good news about that.
Good.
Um, the one thing that we will probably change in the egg bed, in egg building budget is, it sounds like they're gonna have the funds available for the building for next year. Um, so we will put that probably in the budget, the hundred and eighty thousand. But on the flip side, we're also going to put under contributions and donations, four hundred and eighty thousand, so it wipes each other out.
Okay. And then we handled P and Z, soil conservation. They were, they just had some increased costs, and that was the reason for the?
Yep, they, it was, it's four thousand dollars increased, and they're saying, um, more demand for their service, equipment, maintenance, and repairs.
Okay, well, that doesn't seem like a crazy request.
Yeah, and they have, uh, they've developed a five-year capital equipment plan. So it looks like, and they've got that information attached behind the letter as well.
So does that take us through today what you wanted to talk about, or was, did you have some more?
Um, well, yeah, it's gonna have to take us through today because nine-one-one, twenty-four-seven. We'll have to talk with Steve. Um, the only other increase out of the other funds is gonna be the domestic abuse fund, and I'm just increasing that by trending it over the last three years. But you'll notice that the domestic abuse does a in and out of the same amount of increase. So it's just saying as we get those funds, that we will send them out.
Oh, sure.
Um, otherwise, you know, like, nine-one-one didn't even really have that big of a expenditure increase. It was only two-point-nine, so I don't even know if you'd need to talk to Steve regarding that. Um, twenty-four-seven, they have a twelve-point-six-eight increase, but they are increasing their revenues by twenty-six percent, so that kind of offsets. So again, I don't know if you'd need to talk to him on that one. And M and P does the same thing. Their revenues are increasing by their expenses. So she's got some purchases that she wants to make, but again, it offsets with the revenue increase. So I don't think any of those are out of line. I think the ones that we've looked at, um, as far as the increases, there is only one other thing, um, debt service. We have a pay-down option for this year on the debt service. So I'm probably going to work more with our bond counsel regarding that pay-down and look at that. But he has given me some of the numbers, um, so it looks like our payments are going to stay, go up a little bit. The interest is gonna be less. It's gonna be the same amount of payoff, but we're paying less in interest.
What do we have left on the, on the courthouse, this courthouse and the highway department? As far as years of payments, are we, aren't we about?
Can I go grab my book?
Yeah, would you?
Courthouse, isn't that done in two thousand?
Twenty-four, yeah.
And I don't know when our highway shop is done.
Well, I thought one of them was gonna be done early, or had the potential of being done early.
You know, Madam Chair, we have, do we have, what do we have after this, when we're done here?
Um, well, we don't have anything. We'll have a special meeting at one-thirty.
So I can talk slower so we can make it till one-thirty? Just kidding.
Uh, no.
I'm just kidding. Okay, so we have courthouse, that's a expected payoff in twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah, twenty-six.
Yep. But again, I think when we do the pay-down, it shortens the years.
That's what I was thinking. It was, what about the highway department? Wasn't that?
The highway department, I've currently got, uh, payoff of twenty-thirty-five. Um, there, at, you know, at some point in there, there will be, where they're callable, and we'll be able to do the payoff on that as well. We're not to that point.
So when do we think that those bond payments are gonna fall off for the courthouse? I mean, was it a year?
Twenty-one now, twenty.
Hmm?
Twenty-two, it's two years.
Yeah, I think it's two years. But the, the one thing about the bond payments, they're, they're levied. It doesn't come out of the general fund, so, um, we would just stop levying at that time. Although it would be nice to have it.
Well, and I'm just thinking in terms of if we do the opt-out.
Right.
Um, for the roads and bridges, I mean, there's gonna be a decrease, right?
Right, yeah.
In the, in the levy.
Yep.
Yep.
So that will soften any blow.
I agree, yep.
Uh, with the opt-out.
I'm trying to find my deal from Tom, which of course I can't find. I'm trying to find my deal from Tom, which of course I can't find it right now.
That's all right.
But yeah, it will.
Do you know, were there any requests for executive session today? None that I'm aware of.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
With that highway department, if we decide to liquidate surplus of that land, then money from that, can that be used to pay off?
Not the bond.
The existing debt or not?
No.
No, because they're not callable yet. I mean, we could technically probably put the money in that fund, but they're not callable. So we could pay it down, but it's not going to be that big of an advantage with them not being callable. I've talked to Tom also about doing some refinancing and everything on it. So I mean, that might be an option.
Are we on the next agenda or are we having those parcels? Are those going to be on there again?
We tabled it, didn't we, ma'am?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
We did.
We tabled them.
So they'll be on the sixth, okay.
Yes. And there's a little work to do on that one with the highway shop because you'll have to split it off from the main building to shift it over.
Anything else that we need to talk about today?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to go back to what our IT department has done. I mean, we finally have an assistant for, for Jake. But it seems to me that he's really made some giant steps for potential savings and better coordination for the whole, for the whole county courthouse by taking on all of that software, by doing all the centralized purchasing, by, you know, monitoring your printing, monitoring so many more things. I think those are, that's a tremendous breakthrough. We've got to recognize that. But the potential savings on that, I think over a period of time is going to add up.
I agree. Well, that's, that's all that we have on our agenda today. So if we're not having any executive session, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? All right, we're adjourned. And now we have a special meeting. Lincoln County Commission to Order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's life ahead of you, two boys being chased by three girls.
Yep. There you go.
So I'm not signed in here, so I don't have this in front of me.
Okay.
Sherri, what's the item on our agenda? Well, first we need to approve the agenda. Consider a motion.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sherri, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then what is the item on our agenda, Sherri?
We have claims in the amount of eighty-three thousand, four hundred, eleven dollars and fifty-one cents.
And that's for care of poor?
It is.
And so we just need a motion to approve that payment? Is there a motion?
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Sherri, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Is there anything else to come before us on the agenda today?
Opportunity for public comment.
Oh, yes, opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board today? Do we have anybody online?
Carter? Anybody online? Anybody online?
Anybody wanting to address the board? I don't see anybody and I don't hear anybody. So with that.
Move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sherri, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.